I'd like to call the Lumenstap planning board meeting to order on November 7, 2016. 6:30. 6:30, 9-8-2, Pleasant Street, Oakland Public Meeting, Sole Installation Conditions. It came up as questions as to the height and the reference to the height of the Pleasant Street and where to reference the height.
Yeah, so hi, my name is Ben Axelmann, I work with Nexa for a solar energy company based out of Boston and April. And we've had a pretty significant experience building a lot of projects in the state. We are in the process of acquiring this project that was developed by SoCore Energy out of Chicago. And it's our hope to take over this project and bring it to construction and operation pretty shortly. So our hope right now under the current solar program is to bring the project online by early spring of next year, so we're looking to close financing for this project in the next month or so. And I wanted to just come in to get a clarification on one of the permit conditions. The reason for coming in is that the, basically the condition number eight referencing the maximum height of the ground mounted solar arrays dealt with the calculation of the mean natural ground level along the designated front yard.
Ben, can I pause you for one second?
Sure.
I just passed around an email communication.
Yes.
If you look at the last page, it's the list of conditions, and he's talking about condition number eight.
Yeah.
And on the top of the front page, I just checked with our DPW, and that was the engineer's take on this condition. So, go ahead, Ben.
So just to give a little bit of context, the site has about 1,700 feet of frontage along Pleasant Street, which is, has a low of about, you know, ranging from about 646 to 658 feet. And then the whole site slopes down and then rises up again. And we're, the proposed project is on kind of the crest of that hill. So it's a bit lower than the frontage on Pleasant Street, but that hill abuts a subdivision, which I assume is part of the reason for this condition in the first place, but it's a little bit higher than the subdivision. And then if you look at the entire length of the height of the property, it, you know, it's, we're building up here and it's a slope like this, so it's a question of, you know, which is the front yard for the property versus, you know, if you're calculating along the subdivision, are you doing it along the entire length of the property or just the piece of the subdivision? And basically, it's uncertainty. So it's, the question is, is, you know, if you designated the property along, the frontage along Pleasant Street as the front yard, then we could build the project with no problems. But if you took the average in height along the entirety of the northern border, then since we're on a high point, that would involve basically needing to degrade the hill 15 or 20 feet down in order to meet this condition. So...
I have a copy of the plan here.
Yeah, I've got a copy as well. So what I wanted to do was just either ask that the front yard be designated as the frontage along Pleasant Street, or just that the condition be modified to, you know, put in, you know, a reasonable height restriction on the panels while also allowing the project to be built without having to do major excavations there. You know, the height of ground mounted solar panels are typically eight to nine feet depending on the tilt angle. A lower tilt angle is eight feet, higher tilt angle is about nine. So, you know, designating the maximum height of the panels as nine feet above grade would allow us to build the project, you know, to maximize the project's output. You know, making it eight and a half or eight feet would make it so we could do the project, but with a slope lower tilt angle and play lower production. But I'd leave it up to the board to figure out what the best path forward here is, but just getting some clarification on this will allow us to actually close financing on this project and build it.
So you don't, I'm sorry. Is this the same one that we were looking toward?
Just the one on Pleasant Street.
But we're way in the back.
Way in the back, we stepped sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's an access road underneath the high tension wires.
Right.
And then there's a little clearing and, yeah.
Okay.
So you think that this should be higher than the abutting neighborhood?
So, I mean, the way that the project was laid out is that the abutting neighborhood is slightly below the crest of the hill and the project is proposed on the top of the hill. You know, it's not a huge difference in height, but it is a little bit higher. And so, and then it's a question of, you know, what is the maximum height of the panels relative to grade or relative to the abutting neighborhood?
I was under the impression that we established an eight foot height. Yeah, with that in mind.
I think...
With the plantings, et cetera, in mind.
I think that was the general intent. And we've, this was new to us, and let me try to explain something to you. We've since, in the process of rewriting a new one. We didn't have a full ordinance.
Sure.
Okay. So what we did was, we had quite a few neighbors in, and we tried to take their information plus the information from a number of different towns.
Yep.
And then take pieces from different towns, and basically, in the, all the special permit items are ordinances from different towns or sections there too.
Sure.
The general consensus that I can remember, anybody correcting if I'm wrong, was that we wanted the panels in reference to the homes.
Yeah.
In that area.
Yeah.
Pleasant Street is so far away, it makes no difference.
Yeah.
Okay? So there's no way that I can reference off the Pleasant Street. But because of the concerns of the neighbors and the people in neighborhoods was that we did not, they did not want the panels up higher than their property.
Yeah.
Okay? So if it meant that they had to come down to the reference to that property line, you know, so be it. But that, that was the, that was the general consensus. So when we, now we wrote it, we said the front side setback and we get a height to that.
Yeah.
But we didn't designate what was the front yard.
Right. And if you, and if you use the northern border, the northern border stretches on much past the subdivision and drops down a lot, so the average height would be much lower than the height of the subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you look at just the top of the crest of that hill, it's basically the same level as the height of the highest houses in the subdivision. So we could tie it to eight feet relative to that, but tying it eight feet relative to the average of that whole property line would make it, you know, like 20 feet below that because it dips way down.
It dips way down, yeah.
Couldn't it?
Now, it's over the, now the panels would be higher than homes.
Uh, no, they're, they would be, I mean...
You said, you just said that, that if you put them at eight feet based on the crest of the hill, which is the average of the highest point in the neighborhood, then they'd be eight feet up from the, from the top of the house.
They'd actually all be above.
They'd all be above.
No, so I can show you on the, on the, if you have mine.
Okay. Show me on, the right drawing.
Yeah.
Probably on the wrong page.
No, but I just wanted to make sure they're below the neighborhood.
Sure. So here's the neighborhood here, right?
Right.
And the project basically starts and then comes down here. So this is the crest of the hill.
And what's...
And this is the high point. This is 642.
642.
And so the, the first panel starts out here at about 641. The high, and then we're not proposing to be any higher than eight feet above this, which is the high point here.
But if three feet above this, you're above the neighborhood. Right?
No.
I mean, we're, the houses are more than eight feet tall, but...
Right, right, I know what you're saying.
Eight feet from the ground.
From the bottom of the house.
What's the height of the, what's the height of the ground at that first house?
It's six, uh...
642. So it's basically level to the very peak here going up here. And then it slopes down here, so this house is...
How does it go that way?
Uh, it's, it's fairly flat and then it slows, slows out.
It all goes downhill.
Yeah. So this is the highest point of the project. And, you know, there's screening proposed back here, and I don't think they're clearing the trees all the way to the property lines.
No, that's opposed to...
Yeah.
What if you started, you know, lower than the crest of the hill?
I mean, this is the, I mean, you have a little bit below the crest of the hill, you can see the...
Yeah, but then you buy one, like a foot or two.
Right.
Why don't you start at eight feet below the crest of the hill? And in that way, you don't have the neighborhood at all.
Did you have to go so close to that neighborhood?
Well, they're gonna get some...
So I wasn't the, I was, we weren't the company that developed it, we're just looking at this now.
Okay.
This is the area, you know, this is what was permitted. So that would involve reopening the permit to redesign and put it further south.
Yeah.
I know this is, I mean, this area is not that steep, but it starts to get fairly steep back in here, which I assume is part of the reasoning there.
But you've got, you've got quite a bit of room before that happens, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, this is setback for shading. So this is gonna cast shadows on the arrays.
Yeah, that's your problem, you got to...
If I recall, I think the primary concern with the neighbors was...
Yeah.
The sound.
Yeah. And there, and there is a, there is a condition around maximum sound, you know, at the property lines, and we're not, we're not in any issue with that. The issue is just, you know, helping to define, how do you define the maximum height of the panels in a way that satisfies the neighbor's concerns and allows us...
Which way are you pointing? Which way are you...
South. So this is south.
So they're going toward, going toward Diggie's house.
Correct. So it's the back end of the panels here, and then you've got a, you know, dedicated buffer here, and then this is the tree cut line, so there's additional, you know, good additional space of existing trees that are blocking the view as well. So...
Because it better be a significant buffer, because we don't want to see anything that we've seen along Shirley, along the prison line. I don't know if you're familiar with that one, but there's about a mile of green stretched fencing and people have the arrays right in their backyard.
Sure. So I think the, I mean, this is pretty tucked away. These are the only ones that are gonna be impacted at all.
Yeah.
Clearly, I mean, you're not gonna be able to see it from the street, this is long distance away.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the referencing back here makes no sense whatsoever.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And so, you know, the question is, you know, what is the visual impact of, for the neighbors of having this much space?
I think the general, the intent that we had, okay, that I remember, was that the, this is the front yard.
Right.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So whatever you're gonna do in a reference to this being the front yard will dictate. So that means that you've gotta take a portion of this hill down to maintain that height.
Yeah.
Okay?
So it is the intent to level the hill to get it...
To take some of it down, right. Because the, that was the intent, because we wanted to keep it away from the homes and that the visual impact was from the homes. We've got nice homes over here, this is an area where we weren't too happy, but because the way the zoning is over there, it allowed this. So that's why you've got a lot of special conditions on here.
Sure.
So in this case, the conditions, in answer, as I said when I opened, we had a lot of comments from the people that lived in these homes.
Yeah.
And we said we wanted the buffer, and so in that case, I would say the, whatever your references would be, the property line here is the front yard.
Okay.
If you're gonna use a board, that's the one you use.
Right. So I guess the words, is it a reasonable...
You don't want it leveled to the property?
I'm not necessary to be...
The panels?
Not, I, I understand.
Okay.
But, you know, just the, the height down here is a good 30 feet below it, you know, where it is up here. You've got 616 foot elevation at this house versus 642 up here.
Yeah.
So that would require, you know, blasting away the side of the hill to be 30 feet below where it currently is in order to meet that requirement.
No, I think it was these houses over here.
That wasn't the houses point down.
That's not what we intended.
No.
Okay.
We're talking about, this, let's say these houses right here.
Yeah.
Right, not this one way down here.
That's, yeah.
Because we know that's down the hill, that's ridiculous, we're not gonna make...
And we know the trees and the shade and everything is there and it's probably way, it's a good distance.
Okay. And that's a good distance, we're not worried about that. We're saying these, these three houses...
So at, at these two houses, is that...
Those two houses right there.
One of those...
Yeah.
That's a drop down, there is an opening here, I know, this is a little...
Yeah, so are, or just...
There is.
Yeah, so the question is, would it, could it just be along this existing opening here? Because it does start to get further steep down in here.
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay. So all you're looking at is this, this opening?
That would, that would help the neighbors.
Can you give the lot numbers that you're referring to?
Yeah, that is Greg Liscotti, Liscotti.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Good.
Yeah. Land of Linear Marvin Trust and number 19.
Ah, he still owns it.
Yeah. And, you know, alternatively, it might be easier, it might be, save us some money and also be more satisfactory to the neighbors to just do additional planting to fill in this little...
I think that would be a real good thing.
Yeah.
And I think if you could just shift it a hair, move it...
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can look at that too, but I would say...
We need to, yeah.
Yeah, if you had to make those kind of, those kind of plans, that's fine, you know? Those are minor modifications.
Yeah.
And we can deal with those...
Yeah.
Easily.
Sure.
And, and so that's not a property comment, so you don't wanna make a minor modification.
Yeah.
You schedule it and deal with it the next meeting, there's no meeting notice or none of that because of the things, okay? So in that regard, we're glad to work with you. But, like these, Russell Liscotti's house, these are the two properties. Yeah, that's, that's the front side setback there, that's the, that's the front yard.
Okay. It'd be the low point, it'd be the low point between that area would be the front yard.
Yeah, whatever.
The average of the...
Right.
It was the average of those.
Yeah.
Okay? So the average of those would be the front yard. So what we'll do is, this will come later on the agenda, we can make a motion at that point, okay?
Okay.
To say that the, it'd be a modification to the original.
Okay, so then you're looking at a low of like 630, a high of 640, so you'd be looking at 635?
635.
Yeah, so we're still, that still involves at the very top of the hill blasting down seven feet. So if that is what the intent is, then...
That's what the intent is.
Okay. Well, that's good to know then. And then, if we were to come in with a minor modification to say, build that grade but do a more significant screening plan, is that something that would be...
That would have to be treated separately.
It would be treated as a separate thing, but that's...
Yeah, treated as a separate thing.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
And well, to go along with that, if you could show the plan to shift that over...
Yeah.
So it gets out, away from them further.
Yeah, so shift the...
Then there may, there may be a little movement.
Okay.
You know? But I mean, you, we need to see a combination of all that.
Okay.
Clearcutting more forest might not be the best solution either.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. That's what we're maybe always shifting it from the south.
But I mean, you know, I don't think there's a lot of forest down at that point.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's other different ways you can design this.
Yeah.
There's a good opening.
There is. There's a really good open zone, yeah. So I mean, it's not gonna be cut down.
Seems you've got a lot of land to work with, so it's not, you're not restricted.
He's just worried about the shade of the panels when you bring it further up, essentially.
Yeah.
But it isn't gonna be from trees.
Right. Okay, I mean, we can certainly look at that, and I think that we can, yeah, I mean, there's still, it's pretty flat in here, we should be able to push it back here and then just expand the tree cut line here to shift it further south a little bit. We can certainly work with you on a, on a minor modification for that.
That'd be a much better plan for everybody.
No, I agree.
You guys still keep it as far away as possible there.
Yeah, yeah, understood. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Perfect.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's an open room, so who's telling you, Mr. Ryan, this is...
No.
Is it?
Yeah, it, it's open. Do I have any discussion from anyone?
Yeah, he lied.
Okay.
But he didn't know.
Oh, okay. We're not, I haven't closed the hearing yet, so we just discussed it. Do we have any, any comments from the audience? Any questions? I'll ask one more time. Any questions?
They're not here.
Okay.
They're not here?
The people are not, none of them.
Okay. Motion is in order to close the hearing.
So we'll, the second...
Motion made in saying all favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, motion carries. Open public meeting for 45 Summer Street for site plan approval. I want to open this up for...
You can open all three.
All three. For our 645, public hearing for 45 Summer Street for residential apartment special permit. And our 650, public hearing for 45 Summer Street for parking special permit.
Good. That's good. You wait it off.
Almost.
Good evening. For record, name is Bill Hanyke with Hanyke Engineering, we do this site plan and special permit filing. There are three special permits that we're talking about today. One is relative to the number of parking spaces. One is relative to parking spaces being left, being on a separate parcel of land. The third is relative to...
Residential...
Is the use...
You don't know about this?
Yeah, the use act here, it is the use of the, of the building as residential. Then, then on top of that, we have site plan approval, which is actually for both 45 and, of course, the 44 and parcel labeled as 40R, which is a rear of number 40, Summer Street. Basically, this building, what a former office building, is used historically as a manufacturing and you, you guys probably know more about the history of it than I do relative to what we've done in the building. But what the intent is, is to take the building and convert it into 36 residential apartments. What we've done on the site is to have it, the access drive remain essentially where it is right now, reconfigure the parking to provide a more orderly parking lot, which meets the requirements of the regulations, providing a, an area of handicap accessible parking, this location here. From there, there would be a walkway which could give the building here and a handicap accessible walkway which could loop around and get into the building here. This is the, which should be the elevator location here. General tenants would walk, potentially in, got, up two or three steps into the building, but there would be accessibility for that. With respect to utilities, the existing water and sewer come into the building and in part of the reviews, some of the comments back from the DPW, we have been to update those, that's something that we'll be looking at doing as well. And the exact location of those connections will need to be determined as we go further and further in the design process from the mechanical side of the architectural plans. We're trying to, right now, this is all paved in the entire lot, so we're having actually a decrease in impervious area, in this area. We've tried to have some landscaping against the building, some benches along the side of the, of the building in this area here. As I said, landscaping along the main part of the building. Provide some additional landscaping along the front. Presently, right now, there's a handicap ramp, which went to the second floor. It's a wooden ramp system that would come down, some of the other stairwells would come down as well around the building. Some of the stairs would remain and it might be a couple of stairs egress points added along the facade of the building. In this backyard here, some of the units would actually face out towards the woods. It would be planned, some patio areas in that area there on the ground floor, on that level, there are different levels of the building depending on where you are. Presently, this is a very, very steep wooded slope, which goes down into the stone, correct, brook. We are within the hundred foot buffer zone in the 200 foot riverfront area. We have received confirmation for the project. The, the surface water right now essentially drains off into this area now, and that's essentially what is proposed to be done. The reduction in impervious area is what allows us to do that type of drainage under the, under the regulations under stormwater management as well as conservation, so that's, that's already been approved. On the 44 Summer Street site, presently, there's actually a building, another building located in this area here, that will come down as part of this project. This will go, I believe this is five or six units that are in that building now, it would go to two units. So we would have enough parking to handle the units that are in here along with some additional parking that would be utilized for overflow parking from this site. So people could park here, or if there wasn't from here, they could all be parked here. Then we've created a sidewalk system through a crosswalk to bring them across the road, more sidewalk for access and ability in this location here, where the present door is right now. So the intent is to allow the parking to be basically on two parcels of land, which correct, which is a, a lot of this special permit by the planning board under section 2253.1.3. And those parking spaces must be within 750 feet, walking distance of an entrance to the building which they serve. And this measurement from the farther space to this building, this entry right here is about 275 feet, that's well within those parameters. The number of parking spaces for the project is 54, if it would be required by the ordinance, and that's based upon the one and a half spaces per dwelling unit with two or a few bedrooms. The site plan shows 27 parking spaces at this location here, and additional parking across the, the, on the other side, which is a total, there's 44 total spaces for the project. So this, we have 20 spaces on this side. We would need three spaces for the apartment building that exists for the two units that are there, one and a half per unit. That would leave 17 spaces over here for a total of 44 spaces. So the, the second special permit request is for, the board can waive up to 50% of the parking requirements. We're not asking you to go down to 27, this would be actually an 18% or 18 and a half percent reduction to 44 spaces. So that's all outlined in the letter that we submitted. I'm sorry?
Is there parking on Summer Street in that area?
No, three, there were 47 spaces that we're creating. Three for this existing building which is gonna remain, it goes from a five bedroom, a five unit apartment to a two unit. And so we still have to accommodate what is required for this building here, so there's three spaces that are allocated to this building.
And you need 54 for the other one.
44 total for this building.
Yeah, but you need 54 just for that building, right?
54 for this, we need 54...
So if you just wash out the three on the other building, because you need 54 for this one, right?
Right, but we have 44 for this.
You have, you have 44 right there?
No, we have, um...
Right, whatever it is, plus 17.
We have 24 here.
Right?
Plus 17 up here, and then separate from that, three, freer...
But that doesn't just, that doesn't count.
Correct.
You're just, we're saying you need 54 for that building there.
Right.
And you're at 44, you're terrible. Actually, you're at 41.
No, 44.
What, didn't you count the other three in it?
No, there's 47 new spaces on the plan total.
Gotcha. So you're seven shy.
No.
No, because you're using three for the other one, that's why I told you, take the other building out of it.
Hold on.
Yeah.
There's 40, there's 47 total.
Okay.
We have three for this building, which leaves 44 remaining.
Yeah.
Allocated to the big building.
Okay. So we're, we're asking for a reduction of 18 and a half percent, which would be 10 spaces.
Because the other buildings are all separate.
Right. Now, is there, what other parking is there in the area? Is there street parking?
No, there's no parking in the street. Um, no, this whole area is, is signed all the way along, they're saying no parking. There is parking along this side of, of, okay? But essentially, there's no, there's no parking on the street, and there's no park, we're not proposing to have any parking on the street.
That's right, I just, just...
Correct.
I couldn't remember whether...
No.
Okay.
Bill, can I ask you?
Go ahead, Carol.
So Bill, just procedurally, remind me, so you, you can't ask for a waiver because you're asking for more than, what's the...
There's actually no provision for waivers left in the ordinance.
Okay, that's, and it, because it used to be a variance too.
Correct. Well, it used to be, it used to be that the planning board could waive up to a third.
That's right, but then you'd request a, you'd request a variance.
Right, so now instead of being a, requesting a third and a variance for more than a third, they put a provision within the zoning to allow the, the board to issue a special permit for up to a 50% reduction, which we're not asking for.
Those, those are...
We're, we're at 18 and a half percent. Um, no, this whole area is, is signed all the way along, they're saying no parking. There is parking along this side of, of, um...
Yeah, around Carter Park.
Okay, um, but, but essentially, there's no, there's no parking on the street.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's no park, we're not proposing to have any parking on the street.
That's right, I just, just checking it. I couldn't remember whether...
No.
Okay.
Bill, can I ask you?
Go ahead, Carol.
So, Bill, just procedurally, remind me, so you, you can't ask for a waiver, 'cause you're asking for more than, what's the...
There's actually no provision for waivers left in the ordinance.
Okay, that's, and it, 'cause it used to be a variance too.
Correct, well, it used to be, it used to be that the planning board could waive up to a third.
That's right, but then you'd request a, a va, you'd request a variance.
Right, so now, instead of it being a va, requesting a third and a variance for more than a third, they put a provision within the zoning to allow the, the board to issue a special permit for up to a 50% reduction, which we're not asking for.
Those up those a little.
We're, we're at 18 and a half percent.
Okay, so we could have gone the old, old way, we could have gone to 30%.
Right, right.
I'm still trying to figure out where the other, people are going to pack.
What?
'Cause there's short spots. I, you know, you get one person parked, and if it isn't supposed to, that affects two other...
Well, the breakdown of the units...
Two bedrooms.
Um, the breakdown of the units are, there are 20 one-bedroom units, 15 two-bedroom units, and one studio. So, essentially, 21 one-bedrooms and 15 two-bedrooms. Okay, so if you, and the way we looked at it is that if you had one, well, if you add up the numbers of, of one and a half space per unit for the two-bedroom units, this is in our letter, uh, this is kind of an, an analogy, uh, a formula they kind of use to try to figure out whether that would be acceptable. We have 20 one-bedroom units with one space per unit, would be 20 spaces. 15 with one and a half would be 22 and a half spaces. And if you did a studio with one space per unit, if you change the criteria within the zoning to meet that, you would end up needing 43 and a half spaces, and we have 44. So, 44 is, we're trying to justify the 44 by the mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units within the building. Okay? The, uh, as part of the package that we submitted, we also submitted, uh, a landscape plan, which I outlined or described here. Uh, we actually have additional landscaping that we're adding, uh, around the parkland on this side as well. Um, and if you benefit, that's a, that's a gravel log, it's up and down now, and, and some of it's, some of it's parking, some of it's not. Uh, so this will really clean up the area.
There's a collection of stuff back there.
Sorry? This is Prescott Street, there's actually a public way.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, there's actually a, a right-of-way which comes down through here.
Zero access?
Yep, yes, Prescott goes all the way up to Water Street.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and Summer Street goes up to Water as well. So, there's actually a, a right-of-way that exists right now, that, that we're not proposing to change as far as, um, you know, we're not going to restrict any access, we're not, we're not blocking it, putting parking spaces on it or anything like that. But that's remained open, um, for the access point to the, to the project as well as to the other, other units that may use that as a, for the customer or access their own parking.
Okay. Now, that other piece of property on the left there, next to the right-of-way, is that the boarding house or something, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Now, where do they park, do they have park...
They have parking spaces right along here, um, they come off the, uh, the same right-of-way.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we can't do it.
Where's this, uh, uh, Bill, I'm sorry, if you've finished your presentation, where's the snow again?
Um, the snow storage basically is, is better than what it is right now. Uh, they know that they're going to need to do snow removal for, for the, the area down here. Um, so they'll be, basically, they'll, they'll be stockpiling the snow during the storm event and as the storm ends, and then they'll have to do snow removal, um, for this area here. This area here, there's a little more room to winrow to the edges, and if there are larger storms and multiple storm events, that's when they have to do snow removal on that side as well.
So, so when, just hypothetically, we have a decent storm, and then we push it all to that side, we lose another 10 spaces, and if they don't come back, they'll take it off-site for another five days. Possible?
It is, that's not the plan. Um, obviously, they have to accommodate their tenants.
No, no, no.
I'm sure that if, uh, if they started parking on the street, I think that that would be cause for the building expecting to get involved to go sit, tell them to remove the snow.
I don't know how they're going to, you can barely drive on that street.
Yeah, it's...
I know, I'm around it. It's also, I looked at the building, and that's of the sidewalk, it's, uh, it's a good use of the, of the building, the whole building, and I...
Yeah, but when they had the...
Self-develop that whole area eventually.
When the, the Lipton Center was using it, what they actually did was they actually had, um, back-to-back parking. They, they, they did their parking, the striping's still there.
Yeah.
Uh, and they actually doubled up on all their parking spaces to get, so if you were working and, and someone parked behind you, and you had to leave, you had to go find that person, have them move their cars, and get out. Uh, so that was the part, that was how they made the parking work.
The people often parked in my tenants' parking spaces when the Lipton Cent, Center was there, and I had to constantly go out and ask them to move.
Yes.
Because the parking was a nightmare.
Excuse me, sir. Let him, let him speak, and then we'll, I'll do, I'll ask the different people to identify themselves, and I'll open it up to the audience. We'll have plenty of time, thank you.
Okay, um, so, uh, those are the things we're asking for relative to the, um, the parking, the use, and the parking, um, off-site.
Okay.
For the free special permit from overall site management. Okay, and that's all outlined in the letters that we submitted, et cetera.
Okay.
We do have, uh, we did get some comments from the various apartments. Uh, do you want me to go through that now, or do you want to wait on that junk?
Why don't you wait? Let's, let's open it up to the, uh, audience, and then maybe we can reference those after. Okay, I'd like to open it up to the audience at this time. Yes, sir?
Uh, hello. I'm the, uh, the bu, side neighbor, right there, inside of it. Um, the back...
What's your name, sir?
Parking.
Oh, please identify yourself.
Ron Carmier, 41 Summer Street. Remister.
Yes.
Um, the back parking, there's not going to be a double park.
No.
Herb Lipton, that was their problem, nobody wanted to park like that.
Right.
That's how they, they set it, and that's how they got their permit, but nobody could do it. Um, so, so they're not going to be, 'cause I was stuck with a lot of people taking my pa, my tenants' parking too. And in snow time, then it gets really bad. Um, the, the reason there's no parking on the front of that building is because Herb Lipton used to jam that street up, and, uh, we complained so much. The day that, uh, Lanciaini came down, the, the police were there, they have to park in the middle of the street. The fire trucks are there, they have to park in the middle of the street, nobody could get through. And if a truck came down, you're dead. So, we, we got no parking in front of that building, we certainly don't want to get any there either. It's a narrow street, we don't want to hear or that, there are going to be changes. If you have two-bedroom, how many two-bedrooms you said?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
My, my two-bedroom could be a husband and wife, each can have a car.
More often than not.
For work, more often than not now. So, when you start climbing the numbers, and he wants a reduction of whatever you're saying, 18%, I think that's a hard sell. Um, the, the street is narrow, the parking has always been tight, and Herb Lipton made it really bad.
It's tight now without...
Let me, let me talk.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, it's tight now. Uh, the people visiting, uh, the place would always take in my parking space, and my tenants were mad, 'cause there, there was cars there, and I would go over Herb Lipton, and in snow, wintertime, the snow removal, 'cause there is parking in front of my, my building, there's three spaces there. Uh, uh, but the people end up, when I do my sidewalk, which I am required to do, the only one on the street, by the way, that does it. And, uh, but the people then would park on top of the sidewalk and jam us in, so we climbed the bank to get out. And then they'd argue with me, so, that's going to be controlled too. Uh, now I don't, I do the sidewalk, but I hu, I put a huge wind wall, so they have to climb it, the only way I could control it. Uh, I just don't, I know down in the, uh, down on, uh, Water and, uh, Whitney, that, that project, they didn't have enough parking, they had to buy the property across the street, and it's a good thing they did. They tried to get away without it, but, and I, I, and then even up at the school, they wanted to try to get away with less fire, everybody tries to go away with parking, 'cause it chews up space. But the problem is, what are you going to do with cars when you got them? And I, I don't feel that you, you can reduce it. Uh, tear down that front building, then you have more parking. Uh, now, you got the property now. Uh, I, 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 I know living there, it, it, it becomes tight, and then they have visitors. Where are the visitors going to park? They're going to park in my property, they're going to park in, in Steve's property, that's what they were doing. Uh, that's why I, I, I don't see reducing it as a solution. Uh, there are better solutions, tear down that front building, give yourself more space. The visitors, I find, 'cause I own a farm of buildings too, visitors seem to want to always screw up parking. They don't care, they want to, uh, they can't walk two feet, and that's how it goes. Well, I suspect that's going to be the same there. And then, but there's only a couple of people that are going to get screwed in this whole deal, and that's me and H, Steve, 'cause we're there, and, uh, I don't want to do that, so, I, and you, I forgot about... Yeah.
There's three.
Um, so, I'm against reducing parking. Uh, I think it's going to be maintained, 'cause that's a big problem now, and, and wintertime, because it's a big problem. Um, uh, otherwise, I know, I'm all for getting, uh, it would certainly help the neighborhood, there's, uh, right now, they, we got big problems in the neighborhood, uh, from the Carter Park, so, uh, definitely will help the neighborhood, I'm not totally against the project, I'm just, I want to make sure it comes out a good project for them and me, you know?
Thank you, okay, thank you.
Uh, Steve Cabana, uh, I own...
What was your name again, Steve?
Steven Cabana.
Okay.
I own, uh, 60 Summer Street, my father owned it before me, and my grandfather before him. Uh, so I'm very familiar with the history of the building next door. It used to be a plastic factory when I was a kid. Um, and then it became a, a ware, like a warehouse. Then it became, uh, an office building, it was empty for a while. Um, then it was bought by, I, I think, one of these gentlemen. Um, and I was actually approached to sell my building, uh, when they were trying to figure out what to do with it. Uh, and I advised him to buy one of the homes down the street. I said, "Look, you know, the best use of that is turn it into condos, and a couple houses down, these are ratty houses, they should prob, best use of them is to tear them down, uh, use them as parking spaces." And I agree with Ron, it should be both of those homes, uh, they've already bought the property. Um, as it stands now, I have six tenants that park along Carter Park in the, in the evenings, because I don't have enough spaces for them. And in the wintertime, because of off-street parking, they have to scramble, and they have to go around and park across from whatever is a Little Peach Tedeschi's store, 'cause there's public parking there, and they have to walk to the building, and, uh, you know, they complain about that. Um, as it stands now, things are tight. I can't imagine what it's going to be like if you allow, um, them to maximize the, um, the tenancy in terms of, you know, I, it, it's almost guaranteed that you're going to have two tenants in two spaces, I mean, in, in two-bedroom apartments, you know, two par, two cars, and so you can do the math, one, uh, and, and each of those are going to have guests visiting at various times, and there's not going to be places for all of them if you max out this project as they've proposed it. Um, I, like Ron, I think it's an, an asset to the neighborhood to do this properly. As it's currently proposed, it will create a nightmare for the three of us, and it won't work.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Brady. No jokes, please. I own 28 Prescott Street, and I can only reiterate to these two gentlemen that, um, I have three spaces that come down that right-of-way. Um, I, I mean, mine, mine are one-bedroom and studio apartments, and I have to make sure when my tenants come in, I tell them, "There's only one car," because there is no parking. And we haven't parked in Lipton, I'm sure my tenants have, you know, and I'm sure they abuse it, I'm sure their, their guests abuse it. Um, so I can't even imagine what's going to happen if we go to that many spaces and that many people involved, correct? And that many people involved, that it's not going to just impact our tenancy. I mean, this is our living, this is what we do for a living. If I, the house next to me is a four, is a four-unit building, and they only have one space. That guy has only been able to rent, like, half of that building because of the parking. So, there's only one or two people that live in that building. Um, so it, it's an economic impact for us, um, and I don't know how to resolve it. Again, I'm, I'm project, I mean, it'd be nice to see a project there, but I can't afford to, you know, pay for it.
As it stands now, I rent, I ha, a third of my rentals are to people without cars, and I have to screen a lot more carefully to get people who don't have issues with drugs, alcohol. Um, I do criminal background checks on all the tenants that come into the building. So, I, I don't have anyone with problems, but I have to interview seven to eight people for every one tenant I take. And if the parking problem increases, that's a severe stress on me and the town, because I don't want to put people going into Carter Park like the kind of people that are going in there now, that the mayor's having to scramble to, and I got to call the chief of police and the mayor to deal with people. You know, someone was selling drugs, and the opiate, uh, heroin people were sitting in the gazebo for most of the summer. And, and I actually sent an email to the mayor and the chief of police with the license plate of the drug dealer, uh, you know. You know, we've...
Don't finger yourself.
Anyhow, so...
Okay. Do we have anyone else?
Um, I received an email.
Yes.
Someone, you can be here tonight, can I read it?
Sure.
It says, "Members of the staff of planning and development, unfortunately, we are unable to make it to tonight's hearing on the off-site parking on Summer Street in respect to the 45 Summer Street development." Uh, just for the record, it's Fran and Peggy Malo sent this email. "We would like to respectively address the issue of parking. Summer Street is a very busy cut-through street that people use to avoid downtown. It is also used by emergency response vehicles to avoid town. During the summer, it is used for parking for the summer concert series along with numerous other events that are held at Carter Park. On the weekends, there is overflow parking for St. Leo's Church, and during the school season, Summer Street is used for overflow parking for school events. Whenever there is an event downtown and Main Street is closed, Summer Street is used as a detour street. Summer Street cannot handle any more parked vehicles than it is already set up to have. It would create a hazard if ambulances, police vehicles, and fire trucks could not safely maneuver the street in the case of an emergency. The way it is currently set up has restricted parking, and it seems to be working out fine just the way it is. I grew up at 72 Summer Street and have seen how busy of a street it is for a side street. We are concerned that by changing the parking situation, it will be creating an unsafe environment for not only the businesses and residents of Summer Street, but for surrounding neighborhoods in respect to the event of an emergency and response vehicles getting delayed from their arrival. We strongly oppose off-site parking for the development of 45 Summer Street. Respectfully, Fran and Peggy Malo, NFG Homebrew Supplies, 72 Summer Street, ladies."
They used to have delivery vehicles come to their place, and when there was parking along that street, I saw trucks spending hours backing up because they couldn't make it through there. It was, I actually had to go out and help them back up a few times.
It's a narrow street.
And just for the record, we're not proposing, uh, for that one item, we're not proposing to change the parking on Summer Street whatsoever, but, uh, I, I do understand the concerns. Uh, but our, our proposal is not change the, the Summer Street available parking there now, and we're not proposing to, to utilize any of that space as our numbers. Uh, what we're doing, we're trying to accommodate what we feel will be satisfactory parking. And it may be that, as they interview tenants, that they have to restrict them, uh, coming in, even if they have a two-bedroom house, they can only have a two-bedroom apartment, they can only have one car. That might be some of the, um, some of the, the management that they need to do on their end to get that part of it to work. Uh, but with the space that we have available, um, especially on the 45 Summer Street side, uh, the, the availability, if we could, if we could have used the same configuration of parking if they had it, the Lipton Center, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need that waiver, but, or that special permit.
Okay.
These spaces do actually comply with the zoning relative to size, uh, width, length, and, and maneuvering out behind, um, as well as with the ADA standards for the, for the compliance of that, so, um, we understand that there's... We're hoping to be able to address them.
How many more spaces could you get if you took that whole... When you want two last units?
Yeah, we have to take a look at that.
Two, right.
We would have to take a look at that, but just by, just by...
If you took that entire building...
Should we put those on both sides? Or go down the... Nah, there's a house on the other side.
Well, we would have to take a look at that. You might get four more, I'm not sure if we have enough to do, um, to move the driveway over, is what you're saying, and put parking at both sides.
You already have four there, so you, you get four more.
Right.
Yes, yeah, they would eliminate four. It would also eliminate the...
You would get seven, you'd get back seven. You'll, you'll make five.
You'd comply. No, I would shoot it by three.
Shoot it by three.
There's got to be a way you can configure it without that kind of density to come up with those 10 spots, 'cause I, I happen to agree with Water, what was just said, I use that street every day as a cut street. I, I know the issues on that street. I use that street every day as a cut street, I know the issues on that street, I'm just having a real problem with the parking itself. But there's gotta be.
There's probably a problem there now, because everybody that.
But I do think it's a good project for the neighborhood, I really do.
You probably, you don't have enough spaces in your. I don't.
No, they don't, so why compound it?
Why even put another project that doesn't have enough spaces in a tight area? There's no doubt that there'll be overflow, and forget about it in the wintertime, like the year before last, when we had that storm and the city had to come in and, you know, plow everything into Carter Park, because people were coming around that corner and sliding, or where they built the doghouse.
Can you just segue maybe to the building part of it? We have your architect here, so if we could talk about the building, maybe we could, maybe you could present some of the information relevant to that.
I think Dave would.
He just raised his hand, give this gentleman over here a chance to speak, please.
My name is Dave Kiesewetter, we, Dan and myself bought into this property just about nine months ago, so we're the new owners, so you may have had some contact with some people before us, but I've talked a little bit to Ron, I've seen you around, but I don't think I've talked so directly to you. I want to talk quickly, just quickly address some of the things you were saying. I appreciate all of the concerns, I think that there was quite a bit mentioned about the corner being issue, some of it with parking, and some of it just with what's going on in that corner. And I think that that's worth mentioning again, I think if you go to that parking lot, you're gonna notice a lot of riffraff, I'm there every day, I live in Leinster, I take responsibility for what goes on there. We do our best, but there's a lot, some of that's from the neighboring buildings, some of it's not, it's not that simple for a project of this nature to go off, we're kind of working against that, so it's sort of simple to say, "Take down your entire building across the street." But I think the actual best thing in terms of improving for the neighborhood is going to be to have that building not be a vacant building, not have that be a super-fast cut-through, not have that just sort of sit there, I think that, you know, every month that goes by, it gets a little bit more recognized as that. And I think that's really what we're trying to address, you know, as much as possible, so I really do appreciate a lot of the concerns. I mean it, and I, but, you know, I think our primary focus is is to sort of address some of the, some of the issues that we're having with that corner. That's our hope, you know, we're putting in thirty-six high-end apartments, we're quartering primarily young professionals and older people. We're really looking to go after that tenant base and, and, yeah, I think that's, I'll say that, I mean, Dan and Steve might be able to talk a little bit more directly to the building, but there you go.
Sure, I mean, I'm Steve Gallagher, I'm the architect, and I can give you just a brief rundown of what we're doing on the building, so. The building is, as we said, it's an old factory. It was built in two stages, so the smaller wing that you're looking at right here was built in eighteen seventy-nine, and then the rear wing and then larger main portion of the building were built in eighteen ninety-six. And some of it has been subdivided into office space at various points in time, some of it is still open. And it's actually in extremely good condition compared to most old mill buildings that you see, so it really is a prime, you know, candidate for doing this, I think. It's all, I mean, some of you saw it inside already, it's almost in moving condition on the exterior walls, so we're gonna take out all the interior partitions, we're gonna put in thirty-six apartments, as Bill said, it's twenty-one bedrooms, fifteen two-bedrooms, and one studios, the layout we have, that we're closing up. And, you know, some of them will be handicap accessible and, yeah.
Let's pick up a little bit, because they have a hard time picking up.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions, obviously, we're really focused on the site plan more than the specifics of the interior layouts. But I think that, you know, what we're proposing is definitely gonna make the best possible use of this building, and it really is.
I agree with a lot, a lot of what you said, I'm just still trying to see where we can get some additional parking. You know, because you got thirty-six high-end units, I mean, that's a significant amount of income coming off of the building. So I don't know if the density's off, but the parking's off, and I appreciate everything you're doing, because that would really do a number of good things for that area of the city, but I can't see anything but problems unless we try to configure some more parking. And I understand, I do, I understand your dilemma, but.
I'd like to address these concerns as well, my name is Dan Maltnick, I'm an owner of the building with Dave. You know, a lot of good comments have been made about some of the concerns with parking, and I appreciate those as well, I think Dave addressed a lot of them from our perspective. You know, for us, I think we're trying to put our best foot forward by taking down two-thirds of the building that we purchased across the street. Obviously, that's a significant economic concession that we're making in order to try to make this viable project. If you consider the actual parking needs for this building, most of these apartments are one-beds. These are not people that are likely gonna have more than one car, many of them may have no cars at all. And, you know, I think there's a real reduction in the number of cars and the number of, or the amount of cars that people have these days. The mayor himself pointed out when we met with the entire city a couple months back, as we were in the planning stage of this, that the mills down the street below us, a lot of them have just really large open areas for parking lots that are, they're not filled, and commenting that, you know, some of these parking arrangements can be overly restrictive. So what we think we're proposing here is a situation where there's significant parking, we're making a significant economic concession in taking down two-thirds of a six-family that we have across the street. And we really think this is gonna be sufficient for the neighborhood so that cars aren't forced to park on Summer Street.
If I could quickly visit, you had, you had mentioned this, you know, thirty-six high-end unit, there's a significant amount of income coming in, I think that is limited by, regardless, I actually think that compared to rent is stopped at a certain point in life. And these units are gonna outpace that in terms of sort of a direct equation, these are gonna be high-end units, we are putting in, you know, granite and really trying to do the top-line thing here. And that doesn't become economically feasible at a certain point, and it is pretty close, so we're really looking to do that, and from simply a special planning boards committee, I would ask that, you know, there is some concession that we're asking for in parking, and I acknowledge it, but I would ask that compared to the, what we're bringing to that corner. So there's gonna be some concession either way, if it stays in the state it is, if it's just sort of random warehouse space, there's gonna be a significant concession that the city is looking for, it's gonna be basically half-used and sort of manufacturing that isn't working as it has been for the last fifty years, I feel like the concession there is gonna be more significant than a small parking concession where we bring in thirty-six high-end units, and that's not downgrading, I understand parking, I'm a landlord, I do understand the issues with parking.
If I could just add that.
I was at that.
Excuse me. Get ass and then I'll get your bag.
A lot of the apartment complex that we've done in different areas, the one-and-a-half per unit for all units doesn't really fit. It is excessive, and by using a two-bedroom as one-and-a-half units, what that does, not every two-bedroom unit is gonna have two cars, it'll have one, and then, you know, if we figure fifty percent of them have two cars and one, fifty percent of them have one car, all of a sudden, those numbers start working. So if you start thinking about it from that perspective, and then, I don't know if there will be any users in here that don't have a car, that, that's, that, that's, you know, really can't plan on that, which is why the one-bedroom, one car also makes it sound a bit overwhelming.
You don't have a figure that everybody's gonna have a car.
You have a one-bedroom to one car, because if a couple moves in with one bedroom and each other car.
Right.
Are you only gonna give them one space, or are you gonna give them two spaces?
No, well, you get two, first come, first served. I mean, that's what we're setting up, yeah, first come, first served, then everybody else look for a place to park. And where is that place, you know it's not gonna impact Summer Street, and, you know, I'm in full agreement with the off-site parking, I think that's a great idea, I don't have a problem with it. It's, it's finding where the other people are gonna park, and, and, you know, the one-and-a-half spaces doesn't always work. And that's why we don't allow garages being covered, because that was always being covered in the one-and-a-half spaces, so we've seen a lot of failure in that end too.
Well, I'm sure, if you got, and I know you probably know this, but you could have a parking space per bedroom if you reduce the single-bedroom apartments by four, and the two-bedroom apartments by one, and get rid of the studio apartment. Doesn't seem like a huge loss for a big gain, I think, as far as the parking is concerned, where you're having.
You're eliminating six units?
Six units, but it gets you a parking space, two for each two-bedroom apartment and one for each one-bedroom apartment.
Well, two is not the requirement.
But it brings you up to fifty-four, so let's just say, you know, Pat's got a solution to get you up to fifty-four.
Unfortunately, it's not economically viable for us.
That wasn't work, this is, this is bottom line, this is level, so the rents aren't that great, that's, that's how twenty percent makes the project not doable.
How many, can I just ask a question, then you can go ahead, how many spots do you need?
We need fifty-four in a zoning.
And how many do you have?
Forty-four. Forty-four. This gentleman, Hi, Gail, and then Gail, and then the counselor.
I know you're pumping in on money you want to, but don't ever say.
Hey, can you speak with me?
Talk to them, talk to them, Ron.
Okay, nod to them.
It's not a bad place.
It does impact us, and I have apartments too, I have low-end apartments. A mother and a father and a teenager, three cars, right off the bat. I mean, and I'm low-end, you're telling me a high-end, they're not gonna have two cars? Two bedrooms and one teenager, that's three cars. I see it, I got it. I got the rooming house next door, they're so low-end, they're below low, and they have a car. I don't, I have, I'm lucky that most people that I went to, they can afford a car, they can really afford to live. They're the bottom of the, that's what a rooming house is, but I do give them a spot, and I do try to keep them quiet, and they're gonna live somewhere. And, but some of them still have a car, so I just don't believe your numbers, and I also, it's, Mr. Omer is right, the two-bedroom could be three cars, and I can't see if they're high-end, that it ain't gonna happen that way. I just, I just don't see it.
No, just, man right here.
Gail C. Modle, Twenty-Five Cloverly Road. I personally think that parking is very important, and I think without adequate parking, you can put the nicest building up, and if people are frustrated for parking, and it limits what's going on, it becomes a sort of an economic down spiral for that building and for the neighbors. But if the proponents are that confident, then maybe the board and they should explore restricting the unit, the number of, you know, one space per unit. And that's, you can't have two cars there to take care of it that way, and if they can make their economic model work with just bringing in people who are only going to have one car, if they have a one-bedroom, then that would benefit the neighbors, and it would take care of them. But it would be a condition perhaps for the board to impose that way.
Okay. Help them.
Clea Frida, One Seventeen W Drive. I haven't seen the project, so I'm not gonna comment on whether it's good or bad, obviously, it sounds like it's a benefit to the community. But we have parking issues all over the city, that's not a secret. And the fifty-four parking spaces probably wouldn't be enough, because I think in the majority of times, if you have a two-bedroom apartment, you can have three cars. I mean, you're gonna have a child, and you're gonna have a mother and a father, and they're all gonna have parking spaces. So, and it does balance out, you're probably gonna have some that I'm gonna need the full amount, but you, I mean, to look at reducing parking is a serious issue, I mean, any of us that have been around for any length of time, there's not enough parking in what's allowed by ordinance. There's a problem sometimes, so I think the parking issue really needs to be looked at. But I agree, by all sounds, it's a, it's an excellent project, but, you know, the parking's gotta be addressed, I mean, it's nice, nice to say this is a good project and economically it's gonna be great for the community. But then when you deal with a parking issue, if you create a problem for somebody else, because you're, you're giving somebody a break on what the ordinance allows, it's really not, not a fair situation, so I think you really need to look at the parking closely.
Thank you.
Just to add another perspective, I'm a single professional, I don't live in Leinster, I live in Boston, but I live in a two-bed, two-bath apartment, just myself. A lot of the people that I think we're gonna be catering to with this building may use one bedroom for themselves, the other bedroom may be an office. We're not gonna be just renting to, you know, a couple with a child or two children that have three cars, I think that would be not the norm for the type of, you know, typical resident that we're, that we're planning to be catering to with this building. So certainly, we do allow for some folks that would have two cars, but I think in some of our two-bedroom units, there'll be people that have only one car. So, you know, hopefully, the board will see fit to approve it with the parking plans we've laid out.
Okay. Yes, sir. Want to get something though?
What, there was an original hearing, is it, Ron, you told me that essentially the same people own the building with new partners?
That's what I thought, the way their papers said it.
Yeah, is that true?
What's that?
My understanding, I think Ron shared with me that.
Hill Realty used to own it, I think it was Sterling Hill, and then in the way the newspaper put it, they still own it.
With new, with new partners.
With the new owners of the building.
So Hill isn't involved at all?
We know nothing about Hill Realty.
Okay.
That's who used to own it.
Well, the reason I wanted to know that is there was a lot of deception in the hearing with one of the councilmen that I went to, and they wanted to change it to a one-way street, and had a proposal for what they wanted to do with the building. So if that's not the case, then I won't, I won't discuss that particular issue.
No, what you have is before you, you have a plan, okay, for these apartments, you have the parking across the street, and then reduction, and the reduction in the size of the house over there, these gentlemen, there's no, there's nothing about one-way streets, there's nothing about, so don't bring any of that. That's all, might be old stuff, and that never, that never came to this board, so.
All right, I understand their objective is to maximize their economic opportunity. My objective is to create a clean, safe, quiet environment for my tenants, and that involves adequate parking. And it's a benefit to the community if it's done right. This project was not viable at all unless they bought that house and created more parking spaces, and in my opinion, it's still not viable unless they tear down that other part of the building, concede that, and create more parking spaces, I don't see it as practical otherwise, even though they want to keep it.
Yeah, it is Hill Holding, but that's the name of.
David, David Rufe is Sterling Hill Holding.
Sterling Hills Holding.
What's it zoned?
Which it was before.
Which it was before.
Oh, I don't know, but what I'm saying is, nobody else, okay, Hill Holding or anyone else, has been before this board, okay, for that building. So if there was, that I know of, and I've been here for twenty-six years.
Well, there, there was.
So, no, so they may have had private meetings, they may have had some conjecture, they may have talked to the people in the neighborhood, but, or they may have talked to councilors, I'm not sure, I can't speak to any of that. This is the first meeting that we have had with the planning board concerning this property. So anything that you may have had outside of that has no bearing on this.
I get it.
Just a quick point of clarification, we were not involved before January two thousand sixteen, so if this happened before nine months ago, ten months ago, whenever that was, it's not us.
Yeah, it was.
It wasn't us.
Yeah.
I have one question, please. Is there any other comparable projects in Leinster that could use as a concrete example of numbers, of apartments, and how many spaces they do absolutely take up?
What, what the zoning numbers, the one-and-a-half and the ones, that comes from experience over the years. And that's the standards that we get from the state, and that's where we found. There are other developments going on, I think over on Adams Street, they're taking one of those, one of those old buildings, I think it's the same building that the YMCA is in now, and those are all gonna be upscale apartments and, and lots, and I don't know all the details, but they also, but they, in that case, they have the sufficient parking, you know, on their site. So we don't have an issue, and, you know, that kind of issue, and that's gone through fine. But we've, we've run into, it's the old ceiling building.
That old mill building that they did in back of Doyle Field, that seems like they're very similar. I wonder what the parking's like.
That was, on Green Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the old ceiling building, that was. Yeah, the old ceiling building. That was...
I think they had a lot of onsite parking.
They have a lot, yeah.
They have a lot of onsite. It's all behind you. You don't see it.
No, they, actually, they, I think they, for a one-bedroom, I think they deed, well, for a two, for a two-bedroom, they deed two spots with the...
Yeah, that's...
But those are condos, you know, those are condos.
Yeah. So we have, so these, these numbers that we have are numbers that we've, not only this board, but other boards have experienced with over the years in saying, this is what we find, are numbers that have worked. Now, will work, is it number different than in Boston? Yeah, we don't have the mass transit. There are a lot of places in Boston where you get, nobody has cars. Everybody uses mass transit. They all work within, and that's the advantage of working in Boston. This is a, this is not an urban city. This is a suburban city. And people drive to the places. Yeah, you can walk from there downtown, and you can do some things, but the majority of the people are going to want to have a car, uh, to get a little further out and get mobility. So you don't have, um, the, the mass transit to take care of, uh, that. So that's why the, the numbers that we have are pretty much the numbers we're trying to work with. You know, sometimes we do have concessions, and sometimes we don't. There's, it all depends where it is, and if we feel it's not going to have, have an impact. I don't know here at this point. I'm not making any explicit, any, saying anything one way or the other. Okay? You have the apartment head comments.
We had also submitted a, a letter prior to the original, uh, public hearing meeting, uh, which was, um, delayed due to a horn issue. You have that, the October seventeenth letter? Ron, I knew I was blocked. I think I... I can, I can start going through them if you want.
Sure.
The Board of Health, um, the Economic Public Utilities have proposed, we don't know what the building was used for previously. These are, there are, there are monitoring wells showing the plant, any impacts to the interior of the building is a question. Our response is most recent use of an office building, an interior building will be completely renovated for residential use. We have no knowledge of the monitoring wells, but make the presumption that the building renovation would be performed in compliance with all applicable codes. This would need to include any related issues that may or may not exist relative to environmental issues performed under Mass General Law Act of twenty-one E. Uh, so if there are any issues with respect to Mass General Law Act of twenty-one E that the, uh, that will be, you know, from the building department. Um, second comment was, it appears that the use of the chattel surrounding properties in our block... DPW, uh, their first comment was, a new domestic water service line off the Main Street is required. The City of Leominster Department of Health Work requires that domestic water service is separate from the fire protection service. Uh, our response to that is, I'm clear at this time whether domestic water has a separate connection already, or if the connection is off the fire protection line. This will be reviewed prior to construction, and if a separate line is required, it will be installed. Uh, so essentially, we haven't done, got enough information relative to where the actual domestic feed for the building versus the fire feed that will come in, and if, uh, if, if it is pulled off, it'd be, um, the fire feed, and that will have to be disconnected, and another, another connection made to the street. Please notify DPW Engineering Division prior to forming a soil test for the root pits. Soil testing adjacent property in forty R and forty-four Summer Street will be performed prior to commencement of construction. Verified presumptions made during the design process. This test will be coordinated with DPW Engineering Division. In these three locations here on the, uh, on the forty-four Summer Street property, we're proposing some, some underground, uh, storage and leaching into the soils, um, which we said we'd be testing. And we'll be doing that prior. This one here, we'll have to actually wait till a building is built. Uh, but these two, we probably can do the test pits and, and presume that that, that area is, is the same. How does, how does the runoff in the parking area at the rear of forty-five Summer Street flow to the nine point zero one? Based upon review of the site, there's a slight tip from the area of, of the guardrail away from the top of the slope that drains directly to the brook. In this area here, is where it's kind of crest in this location here. Um, so this area here rains basically down to a low point further down the road. And that's, that's how we're, um, designated. There actually is no, uh, curb cut or, or drainage piping down in this area, but everything kind of flows down there and eventually just seeps into the ground at that location. If the two minutes firm proposal is inside of the parking area, uh, the response is no change in the site, just to propose a serpentine existing guardrail. So right now, at the edge of the guardrail, uh, where the guard is proposed, we're basically going to top, uh, the pavement, but do no work beyond the guardrail, uh, in order to try to basically leave this area untouched, uh, into the, into the woodwork. The National Resource Conservation Service hydraulic hydrologic group's limits should be shown in the pre-development and post-building. Uh, so captions and maps. Response in this particular case, soil and property are referred to as urban land, which essentially means it's been previously developed. Uh, based upon knowledge, theory, the fact that soil adjacent to property are, are these hydrologic soil group A soils, presumptions made. The entire product would be classified as A soils. So essentially, right on park, part of park, it's all paintless. And just knowledge of the area, knowing that this is really mostly gravel, uh, all the way through to the center of town and beyond. Um, that was the presumption that was made during that. Buildings common, fifty-four parking spaces, uh, are required. The parking categories are provided in narrative of the product's submittals. The proposed requests are related to the proposed forty-four parking space for a product with review and justification therein. Um, conservation, this product is in an area that the Intersection of Conservation Commission has granted, um, and has received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission during the regular schedule of the Conservation Meeting of nine twenty-seven sixteen, and we were acknowledging that. A full list of conditions imposed, a product by Conservation Commission can be found within the order of conditions, or the following special conditions are presented to the planning board. One, trash and other debris materials were removed from the stream banking prior to construction activity beginning. That was actually something we talked to them about when we did our site work, um, is that there's a significant amount, oh, no, no, significant amount, but it's, there's some substantial, um, trash and debris down the hill, and, um, the applicant has agreed to basically clean that area, pick that up as he gets his dumpsters on site, or someplace to throw it. But we made that agreement with DPW as well as Conservation. Dumpster, dumpster pad shall be fenced. That's need to prevent debris from leaving the dumpster site. Dumpster pads shall be also created towards the parking area and shall have berms accompanying the side to prevent dumpster runoff from directly draining towards the stream bank. Um, this dumpster pad, showing this lit area right here, is actually, um, shown as being fenced, and it does pitch, um, this way. It's a concrete surface versus pavement, so that'll be able to direct that in that direction, uh, towards the, um, towards the parking lot. There should be no stone storage on the stream banking, and no snow dumping site should be fixed to the guardrail that runs along the banking. That would be along the banking right here. The guardrail along the length of parking area, uh, parking areas will have a barrier fixed that need to prevent trash and other debris from accessing the stream banking, um, in our, our acknowledgement of those comments. So essentially, at the lower half of this, um, they were asking that we put some sort of a mesh, uh, fabric, um, such as even, even chicken wire was, uh, was described at one point in time. But we'll, we'll let, um, the, uh, the owner decide.
So you can have a guardrail there?
It already exists.
It exists, all right.
It exists, yeah.
Yeah, it's a steel guardrail.
Right.
The intent was that they want, they didn't want anything moving down the bank, wanted everything moved everywhere. Okay. Uh, fire apartment, uh, full review needed, uh, full review needed for existing practices to determine what, if any, of it will be useful for the new occupants. We acknowledge that comment. That'll be done as prior to fire suppression design, prior to building permits. Please Department, additional parking plan is acceptable. All hand-get parking requirements be satisfied, and traffic's, uh, cited not required. Public ways, traffic signs, and traffic lights are already established. We don't hope additional traffic to flow through downtown areas. So all of our response to that is that we, we acknowledge those comments. Uh, so those are the department comments that we've received, um, at that time. Um, and we've, uh, we've run through with rest, acknowledged and agreed to pretty much all of them as we, that we move forward. So the only thing that we have at that point to do, when we do the testing, get DPW involved with that, um, and then check the water line for whether it's actually connected to the main or to the sprinkler line coming in the building. So that will be it for our stuff for now.
Okay. We received, you know, a lot of information. I think the project's a good project in, in essence. I think we found that we have a severe parking problem. And it seems like from the, from the neighbors, uh, they've had a continuing parking problem. Uh, but this is going to exacerbate it somehow, uh, even more. And I'm not sure if there are any other solutions where we can, um, find some better parking, or improve the parking somehow, or can, can increase it. It seems like the, um, I think we come up with eighteen percent, uh, seems to be a little high. You know, it's three or four parking places that we were, were cutting. I think the board, I'm just speaking for myself, uh, may look more on that. And pretty much there were some board members, I think, one, one hundred percent. So, um, I don't know. At, at this time, the, the plan looks pretty good, and I, and I'm, I want to ask the members what we want to do, is whether we want to continue this, and ask to see if there's a possibility to find some more parking, or we'll change the parking plan or something. I'll have to close the hearing and go into discussion later on.
May I have a, may I have a moment just to talk with my client?
And before you do, I, I think it would behoove you to keep the meetings open and to see if you have other solutions.
Yeah.
You may.
We can, we can continue this to try to, you know, I'm not looking to close it tonight.
The possibilities of continuing it or coming back in?
Yes. You don't want it to go to a vote now.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're not opposed to this.
We know. Can we go to the regular meeting?
I can, uh, I need a vote. Uh, I have to have a vote to recess the hearing. I can recess the hearing at this point and go for, uh... While the, we recess the hearing, and we can...
I'm just sitting around doing that.
And we can go to our call to audit for a regular meeting.
If they walk back in, they can do it.
So I, I need a motion on order. Made a second to recess. Okay, at this time, I like to open the regular meeting. Call, call to order.
Patrick Farley?
Here.
Fred Frederick?
Yeah.
Paul Weiser? Salvador Chacon?
Here.
John Souza?
Yeah.
Harold Torioso?
Here.
Tom Skarren?
Here.
Michael Mahend?
Here.
Okay. Minutes of previous meetings, October third.
Make a motion to accept as written.
I have a motion made in second. Do I have any discussion?
I, I need to make point, the, the minutes that are before you are from October seventeenth.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's...
I was, I had two sets. I think the seventeenth are done. Those are the ones before.
So this is the seventeenth? The seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is for October seventeenth.
Nobody knew that. It was kind of scary, isn't it?
But I thought that's what we thought.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Okay.
Motion to come back into session.
Uh, motion made in second is to go back into session.
Um, we would respectfully ask that the board continue the hearing to the meeting of June twenty-first. You know, we're going to try to have a, uh, a sit-down and look for some alternatives, or some, uh, to try to address the...
That's fine. Okay.
Motion, motion to, uh, continue?
I have taken each one.
I know, I know. Motion to continue the open public meeting for forty-five Summer Street, the site plan approval. That's number one.
Uh, motion to continue to twenty-first. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to continue the public hearing for forty-five Summer Street, residential apartment special permit, to eleven twenty-one. Second.
Okay, motion made in second, eleven twenty-one. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to continue the public hearing for forty-five Summer Street for parking, special permit, to eleven twenty-one.
Motion made in second is for eleven twenty-one for special permit of parking. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Okay, so those, move on to the twenty-first. Okay, folks? It will, it will be, yeah. We'll get the times. They'll be published, all the times. Okay, but probably, was there anything scheduled before, for the twenty-first?
Uh, not currently.
Six thirty-one and six thirty-two.
They'll be on the front of the document.
Six thirty, six thirty-one, and six thirty-two.
Okay. Over public, public meeting for six seven zero Mechanic Street, the site plan approval. Okay. Do we have a representative?
Okay. My name is Anthony Cleese. I'm with Footman and Vingham Associates, design engineers for the project. Also here with Kiersey Kelly from Crossroads Realty Trust. Uh, the project is for a nine-thousand square foot office building. It's located at six seven, six seventy Mechanic Street. To familiarize you with the area, if you're familiar with the, the current off, um, Crossroads Office Park, there's two buildings that sits back. They're back here. VP Holman Construction Company, right across the street here. There's an existing paved, uh, driveways in and around. We have a boulevard entrance here that exists to hit the crossroads. And there's also the entrance that brings you straight down. So this area, if you ever driven by there, it's basically a flat lawn area with a fence, uh, chain link fence in there. That's where this, this project is proposed. I think years ago, there used to be a, a business there, many, many years ago. So we're proposing for a nine-thousand square foot office building, accessing off of the existing driveway that comes around this area. So no new, no curb cut into Mechanic Street. Parking behind the building. We have a requirement of what, eighteen spaces? We're showing thirty-four.
Give some of those to go in.
Rent them to them, and a lot of shit on the over.
And, uh, utilities for the site, we're proposing an onsite stormwater system, underground infiltration, located here in the parking lot with a roof, and, and stormwater from the parking lot will go into that, percolate into the ground with an overflow to the existing stormwater system that comes down this driveway as part of the Crossroads Office Park stormwater system. And there's sewer. We're going to bring sewer, extend it up Mechanic Street a little ways, bring it into the building. And then we're also going to tie, um, the water services. We have two options for that, and that's, one change that occurred from the original submission is based on discussion with the DPW. There are two water mains in Mechanic Street. There's one on our side of the street, and one on the other side of the street. Uh, through DPW's review, we were notified that this section here on our side of the street, the water main is not active. So unfortunately, we can't use that one. So we're, we're going to try and tie into the one across the street, but there's also a drain line right in the middle. It's a decent size, so that might not work. So we may tie off of our own line that goes down to the crossroads and just come across the front end. So we have two options that we're going to look at during construction. Uh, we've given plans to the DPW. They said they're fine with either option, so... Uh, but we did submit a revised plan for your file for, for that. So DPW was, was pretty good, uh, after revising plan with, with what we had. Snow storage, you know, on the sides of the, the parking area. Looking at having some landscaping, some trees on the edges. Kind of trees on the corners. We don't want to really... Trees on the corners, we don't want to really hide the building, but, you know, planting all along the frontage here with various plants, grasses, and whatnot. And also on, on, this actually becomes the front of the building that they want, you know, along there. Dumpster area off to the side, big screen with fencing. And that's, do you move over to your plan?
Okay. Looks like an easy one. Okay, do I have any others? Do I have anyone on the, the audience that wishes to speak? I'll ask one more time, do I have anyone in the audience? Any questions from the board?
Just, do you want to just go through the department heads, which are...
Yeah.
Department heads. Anthony, did you have a chance to see these?
Yep.
So, building approves. Police state, well, it approves regular parking, handicap parking, meet the requirements. Board of Health says please minimize light, traffic access for the residential properties. Maybe residual trash buried in the area from historic landfill activities.
That's something good, maybe.
Concom says they will require a stormwater permit. Recommends that all laws be followed, in particular to drainage erosion control in And Fire says the building will require sprinklers, manual fire alarm, or Lemonster Fire Department radio master box alarms, troubles and tamper's for fire alarm and sprinklers shall be monitored. And stormwater permit is required by DPW. I think that's all.
That's all. On the stormwater permit, we've submitted that to the DPW, so it's, it's pretty straightforward with this, so we should be, we should be off set on that. Fire Department comments, fairly standard good information we passed along to the architect, so they can incorporate their requirements into their final building plans, which the Fire Department will have to review at the time of building permits. So I should put that there.
What's good, can I ask what's going in?
Call Williams.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's a real...
They're moving up front.
Yeah, so they're, they're back here now, they move up front.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So just office, office.
Are there any, are there any houses directly across the street?
There's one.
I know that other one comes out, you know, right.
Actually.
Is it around?
I think there's...
Yeah, I was going to say, how?
Because you get homes there, right?
How far are you from the proposed Cumberland Farms?
Oh, we're way away.
Right away.
This is close to, almost, this is on the other side of the way.
This is close to the Florence Street.
Okay, no, you are, okay, okay, okay.
You get two houses here.
How far are you from the sheep?
Um, a decent ways. Sheep's actually... This week, they're over near our office. Yeah, and the goats.
They move around.
So here's VP Holman building here, house kind of set back.
Yeah, they got a picture, right?
So it's this grass lawn, that's VP.
I mean, there's been no impact with the other driveway.
No.
Yes.
I'm good.
It's a good use.
I can make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion made in second to close the hearing. Do I have any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony.
See you there.
Thank you for making our life easy.
Try it, try it, all right.
36 Lancaster.
Open public meeting for 36 Lancaster Street for site plan approval. This is industrial, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess...
I thought you would give me four for this.
You two are right. We're changed.
We'll start with what you approve, kind of sort of. My name is Anthony Cleese, I'm with Whitman and Vingham Associates, design engineers for the project. Also here tonight is Bill Collins of Police Inc., who is the property owner. As you may recall, it was last October, we got site plan approval from the board for this, this plan with some conditions. So this is the existing industrial hardware, a new building here with some additions to that, parking layout, connection to Lancaster Street, connection to Wheeler Street. Existing curb cut onto Johnson was to remain, and we had had an existing two-way curb cut into Johnson to remain here. One of the conditions from the planning board was that this needed to be an enter-only, we weren't allowed to have an exit there. So, then we have an existing, there's an existing abiding house here that was in the commercial zone. And I point that out because the property owner has since purchased that property. There's that house here. And by purchasing that property, it allows us to better lay the property out. So as you saw before, there's a, there was a parking lot here, and this building was tucked down here. Now we have a little more flexibility with offsets to pull this building up to the front, kind of hide the parking behind it, and make it consistent with the existing, the other parking in the other lot here. These buildings, the frontages, can kind of look and play off the architecture of each one, eliminating the curb cut onto Lancaster Street here, and still maintaining a curb cut onto, onto Wheeler Street. And as the, the enter only was changed, as opposed to the two-way, that was there. This, this all really stays the same. The other addition was that, instead of having some separated additions in the front here, we're proposing a 28-foot wide addition along the entire side of the building. So what that did was, it just pushed the parking field over a little bit. So on the other plan, let's see, we had perpendicular parking all along here, this whole width. But by this whole thing shifting over, we have a property line here that gets in the way, so we had to reduce some of that perpendicular parking. We had two left, and we had two parallel spaces. But because this layout works out much better, we're able to make up that parking within these fields here. So we still have the same parking count, 110 spaces needed, 110 provided. And this is all based on retail. Could be a potential that maybe professional offices come in, which we would need less parking for that. So we tried to design for a worst case, kind of all retail. If office comes in, we'll just have more parking than we need. Same three-level building up here, and that, and that really was where the changes.
It's a good change.
Some of the things we've added, just to bring you up to date, we had proposed some grading on, on, on abiding property, which Mr. Collins had worked out with, with all the abir, trying to, you know, make sure everyone is okay. Original approval had called for rota dendrum being placed along this property line here. But since that approval, talking with this property owner, we'd rather have arborvitae, and those are actually already there, and we show them on the plan. These are all individual arborvitae, which the property owner preferred that, so, so that's, that's already in there. So we're kind of, as you can see, kind of in the middle of construction, so things have been going on, but the biggest thing here is adding this 28 feet is the biggest thing that we're trying to do.
And that didn't change your parking calculation?
Yeah, nope. So as I said, we lost a little bit here, but because this became so much more efficient, we're able to make that up. And this, this really all stayed the same. And in that parking lot, this is 19 spaces and five, so we have 24 spaces there, where before, we only had 21.
I like the new one.
A little, little more efficient.
Yes, not as broken up.
You like being on that.
Yeah, we wanted to do that.
You get off of Mechanic, okay.
Yeah, so it's, we thought it was a much, much improved layout, but just to have to buy a house to do it.
Yeah.
Gee, how novel, to buy a house and then make it more efficient.
And then make it harder.
Yeah, I heard that earlier tonight.
So hard we did it.
For parking.
Okay.
Can you go through the department heads? Oh, they'll open them up.
I'll open up for the audience. Do you have any questions for anyone in the audience? I'll ask one more time, do I have any questions, anyone for the audience? Okay. Do I have any questions from the board? Comments?
Department head.
Yeah. Carol, Department head.
Um, have you seen these? Okay. So, police and fires seem to have issues. Police, concern for high traffic, I'm sure, we went through these, concerned for high traffic volume intersection and projected runway entry into site. Traffic congestion at this location is well-known and at all hours of the day. Vehicles turning left on the 236 Lancaster may result in a crash with vehicles entering Johnson Street from Lancaster. There's an existing sight line issue due to parking on Lancaster that will enhance this risk. Several complaints received due to parked vehicles obstructing sight line. One-way entrance is approximately 15 feet from Lancaster. This is not enough distance to decelerate and safely brake for vehicles entering site when rounding corner from Lancaster westbound. Traffic Division respectfully requests to abolish one-way entrance to avoid potential public safety risk. Primary entry/exit area is acceptable and safely distanced from intersection. Traffic Studies further requested crash data from 2014 to present reflects six crashes investigated at this intersection, with injury and four without. The site has been vacant for many years, and present-day traffic has escalated significantly, significantly at this intersection since former company's closure. Are these the same as from before?
No. Before, it said, police are concerned about the existing curb cut to Johnson and Lancaster. An entrance and exit proposed right at the intersection of a retail property causes concern for public safety. Existing entering and exiting will be difficult, this is already a busy and problematic intersection. Our preferred, our preferred resolution is to consider closing off all traffic and other entrance be placed on Lancaster Street. However, we are unopposed to the existing curb cut being an enter-only.
Yeah, but my point is...
Which where they said they wanted it enter-only, and now they're saying no.
Yeah, and it hasn't changed, it hasn't changed.
Well, I think that one of the things that naturally alleviates itself are people coming from Mechanic Street.
Right.
Are going to naturally take the left into that first entrance.
Right.
They're not going to wait until they get to the...
Right.
Most likely.
Right.
So you're going to have people taking a right and a right right in, possibly.
We actually...
I still didn't like it in the first place, just for the record.
Same thing. All we've changed is more parking.
I know, I know, so that's why he...
We shouldn't even be talking about it. We already proved it. I didn't have to.
Yeah, because we changed it, because it was a two-way.
It was a two-way.
And we said we got rid of the two-way, because we knew that that should be a problem.
Yeah.
Hey, it's, they may find it such a tight turn that they go down to the next one to come in. Because it is a tight turn off of Lancaster Street. Right, and right away, you're in the wrong. He may decide that he wants to close it off anyway, because it's a problem, but...
We always wanted to leave some access there.
I think if we leave it as a one-way.
We wanted to leave it as a two-way, but through discussion with the board, and the previous police comments, where it was a one-way enter was acceptable, we thought, based on, as, as was just mentioned, people coming this way more likely are going to be turning in here.
Yeah.
Be very few people turning in here, you know, and speeds coming in.
People coming this way might do that.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I think it's a valid comment that the intersection, you know, there's traffic there.
It's a rough intersection.
In sight distance.
Well, it's...
This is valid.
Sight line, I know what he's saying, on the sight line from Johnson Street heading south.
Yeah.
You know, is there parking allowed there on that side?
I believe, I believe there is, yeah.
Anthony, before.
Over here?
I mean, on Lancaster Street, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, maybe they can, maybe they can get rid of a couple of those on-street parking spots with no parking.
So this way's not too bad. But over here, I could see having a problem, but that's an issue.
Put up a sign on Lancaster Street.
Yeah, so what happened, there's a lot of cars there for the restaurant. And they need to park it on that right-hand side.
Right, there's a salon too.
So there's a lot of little things there.
So we didn't feel...
But maybe they restrict the parking up to the corner on the other, other side of the building.
That seemed near regards to this project more of a city...
Enforcement.
You know, enforcement determination, but you said it could impact other businesses too.
Yeah.
It's an exist, if it's an existing issue, it's going to be an issue until the sight line is changed.
Yeah, okay. So the Fire says it does not approve the site plan for four reasons. The property developer shut down and dismantled the fire sprinkler system in violation of Mass General laws. The Fire, well, that's a punishment, so don't do that. The Fire, so, I mean, that's not really disapproval. I mean, the Fire Department ordered and tried to assist the developer in restoring the system. The property developer partially installed some new sprinkler equipment and then stopped work. The existing building is in an unsafe condition and poses a fire hazard to the neighborhood. So to me, it sounds like you better develop it.
Right.
The Fire Department proposes that the property developer make safe the existing building with the proper engineered fire protection systems and the engineered plans be available to the Fire Department for viewing table for the new proposed building.
Yeah, and so... Is that the same complaint?
Yeah.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
Why hasn't it been taken care of?
The building's under construction. You don't usually install a sprinkler system until you have a floor.
Did they have a plan, though? Did they show the Fire Department the plan for the sprinkler system?
Yeah, I believe that, yeah, they have plans.
So there's a plan.
I mean, has the Fire Department seen the plans?
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to the accuracy of those statements, because I was dumbfounded by them. A new sprinkler system went in, there are two areas that are not, that we had, and I told them when we put them in, we're just going to have to take them out, because we're doing the construction. So that corner, ugly corner, that's coming down in the next few weeks. So we, there's no sprinkler in that area. And the only other area is in the oldest part of the building on the first floor. Second floor is fully sprinkered, again, except, except the old ugly corner. And the first floor is fully sprinkled on the, the...
Yeah, yeah, no.
On the side that's going to be the front. So, and the reason I can't put the sprinklers in is because we're actively doing steel work, back hose, you know, we don't want to hit a sprinkler head. The reason why they could be on in the other part is it's an open web design, the sprinkler heads are up there, they're, they're protected from being whacked, you know, because of the beams that are there.
Yeah, and if I can, it's, it's an existing building, but I think you almost have to look at it as a new building under construction. You're not going to have all your sprinklers fully activated during construction. You have to...
There's no occupancy.
There's no occupancy in there, and so we, we're not, we need to have them activated...
There's also non-commosible materials in there.
Before, some of the occupancy is allowed.
Yeah.
It's a brick building, steel, steel beams, concrete, concrete floors. So there isn't much left that's compostable. There was before, but you had to, basically, gut the whole thing, so. So we'll, we'll need their, their sign-off to get occupancy.
To get occupancy, yeah. Yeah, clean up for occupancy, yeah.
Then the proposed building, this is DP, this is health. Proposed building will be near residential properties, as he always says, please be aware of any potential impacts, lighting, truck, traffic, HVAC noise, stormwater runoff. Didn't see any details for the lighting. Specific hooded lighting systems are readily available. These products help to keep light from shining beyond property lines.
We've dealt with all that before.
All right, and then DPW provide detail of wall that is labeled remove and rebuild wall is needed.
So on that, I can just quickly, that was in regards to existing field full wall that's here, that the expectation possibly was. When we did drainage, there's a drain manhole going in right there, that we may need to When we did drainage, there's a drain manhole going in right there, that we may need to take that wall down and put it back up. That drain manhole is already in. It was done last year, and we didn't have to really remove that wall, so I just didn't take the note off the plan. That work has been done.
Concon says order of conditions has already been issued. They don't need an amendment.
And then, just to follow up, we did go to the Concon at their last meeting and showed them the modifications. And we got a letter from them saying they accepted it as a minor modification.
Great. And then the last one building, which is my favorite one, "I approve as long as this project ends soon." They have been working at this site for a long time with no end in sight, spelled the same way as site. A demolition permit is required for the house to be removed. And I think that's probably fires concern, it's just like, they just want the project to be done.
I think everyone does, including the property owner.
I'm sure.
That's for sure.
Okay. Uh, do we have any other questions or comments? Okay. Motion in order to... Uh, okay.
Close the hearing.
All in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Who say aye? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy.
Okay. Continued open public meetings for twelve ninety Main Street for site plan approval.
Yeah.
Oh, it's before he got the King's, the old King's car.
This is the King's car, okay. This is the one where, do I have somebody for this? Go. Mr. Hannigan.
Anthony came in here with two nice projects, lots of parking, bought a building.
Trying to sell you some of them.
But go ahead.
For the record, Building and Urban Engineering, we're here to do a review of some changes made to the project at twelve ninety Main Street for a proposed restaurant in this tenant's spot. Part of the change, we're gonna add a grease trap for the kitchen floors, which will connect to the sewer in Main Street. And we went through the parking calculations for the proposal, submitted a letter to the board regarding the same, the same item. And it would need to be an adjustment to the use for it, for one of the tenant's spots to be a professional type of office type of use, such as in one of the things that we, that was a possibility, doing a H&R block or a Lizzie Tack. That type of a, of a use would then balance out the parking from all retail. So, the restaurant use was discussed during the original, Joe Donley, who is the proponent. And during the original proceedings, we, with the board and as well as some of the bodies part of the question of whether there was gonna be a restaurant. At the time, that wasn't anticipated. Since that time, a restaurant has come in and as part of, as part of my discussions with Joey, I did approach a couple of the neighbors, I approached the city counselor, as well as the ward counselor, to talk about that. And it seemed like everything was moving forward, so we moved forward to plan change in with the building inspector's office, and that's when he requested that we come to this board. So, we're here tonight to basically review that. Once again, nothing changed on the site with regards to parking, drainage, utilities, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. The only change that we have from the site perspective is the, is the use of that slot as well as the grease trap.
How did they change the parking?
The parking couch, the way that they parking, it does for a restaurant is not so much in the number of seats, but on the square footages. So, if you use those numbers, we end up with, if we did, if we did a restaurant here with all retail, we would end up with one parking space short. So, what we would have to do is take one of these slots of retail, it would have to be some other use. And as the building inspector fits up or resident developer fits up these tenants' spots, each application for the fit up would then have to have that parking analysis with it to prove out the correct amount of spaces for the issuance of the building permit. So, that's how that would be addressed. And that's all on the plan now as well.
Okay. And how did you allocate the parking for the hotel versus the other storefronts that you, I mean, the, the restaurant? Yeah. The restaurant, hotel. Yeah, I'm just tired. The restaurant, how do you allocate that versus the other storefronts that you have there on that side?
Well, there's no, there's no designated parking, okay? So, that's, that's part, first off, that was not part of we, what we have done. Some of the parking up front is already designated as accessible parking. And we've, I think, all along, have talked about how we would talk with the tenants, and this would be up to the tenant manager, whoever manages the property, to see, or try to get the employees to park over in this area so that there'd be enough spaces up front for the, for the actual tenant customers.
Customers.
Okay.
Any idea how many seats it would be now?
Eighteen?
Yeah, I think it's eighteen. It's mostly a takeout restaurant.
Right. The name's been released, correct?
Right.
It's been in the paper?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Sorentos.
Sure.
Okay.
That's right.
So, they, they're, they're coming in, they have two or three stores in the area, and this will be their first one up in, up in this area here. So, the main, the main component on the interior basically is right about here. This is really where the seating all is, and the rest of it is all restaurant behind, or where they make everything behind, behind.
Kitchen.
Kitchen. That's the road.
Kitchen and castle.
Kitchen and castle.
Kitchen is rainbow.
And no hotel.
It's on the first one of the hotel.
What's, what's their hours of operation?
You know, I'm not sure. Nine o'clock, ten o'clock, I'm not sure.
It's not, it's not a kind of, it's not a type of place that serves beer and wine. You go in, you order your stuff, and you eat, it's just a pizza place.
I believe that their existing facilities close at either eight or nine.
Well, Cumberland Farm's open till one ten, the pizza restaurant, so it's not gonna have...
They're twenty-four hours, you know?
Yeah.
They're twenty-four hours.
No, I think that they're, I think, yes, I think that they're eight or nine o'clock, the way it's looking in their website.
Looking for a liquor license?
Bill, it may vary on the, on the type of business they do. If it's a later business, they'll say open.
They do have liquor at some of their sites right now.
Yeah, not here.
Not here.
This is basically a takeout operation.
And you're sure?
Well, they wouldn't have...
This has to be the strangest tenant ever. I've never been in my life, but he assured me that he's not gonna apply for it. It's takeout. He's not gonna apply for it again.
Regardless, I mean, the place across the street is twenty-four hours.
Is that? I don't, I don't think it is.
Well, it's open till eleven.
Is that the dumpster right there next to the property across the...
Yeah, the dumpster location is not there.
Can we just make sure that that's getting picked up frequently, so that there's not residue, stuff getting sneaky?
Yeah.
Did it, was it? You know, I don't know.
The dumpster location hasn't changed.
It hasn't changed, but did we talk about that prior to?
And, and one of the things that we looked at was, we looked at moving it further this way, but this is where the house is. We're trying to basically center, try to balance it as much as possible.
We were putting a big fence around it.
A fence around it with screening?
Sound padding.
I don't know what's sound padding, but there was also a proposal, the contractor came to us and I'm not, I believe that Kristen, my Kristen brought the landscape plans over. Did she bring this over?
Yes.
Okay. And I, and I talked to Joe about this earlier tonight, but one of the, one of the things that they also wanted, that they could look at changing was the landscaping. And so, I'm presenting the plan basically as fulfillment of my obligation to present the plan for, for contractor. Wanted to revise the landscaping plan mainly around...
Seven, seven. So, plum and cherry trees along the dumpster. How about like right behind the dumpster? Can we have something right behind the dumpster too? Just some kind of plan, like a couple abatis maybe?
Is that where the dumpster was always looking?
Yeah, see, that's confusing to me.
Yeah.
But as you...
It was.
Yeah, I'm just, because I remember the concern.
Only because it was behind the building before they moved it to the other corner.
Right, that's right.
Remember the first part?
Yeah, I do.
It was over here, wasn't it?
It was over here.
The rest of it was there.
We just need something.
Yeah, but then it was over here, and now this is where it was approved, but I remember something about a buffer around.
There was a buffer of vegetation around here, okay?
Yeah.
So, as far as the plantings around the building, okay? The, Joey and I have talked about, the, the plan that the landscape park came up with actually was extremely expensive. So, this is something that they're comfortable with doing, but I do believe that the section around the dumpster should remain as on the approved plan, which is what we talked about outside. It was a lot more, it was more than abatis.
Yeah.
It was a lot of different, it was a lot of different vegetation around this area right here that I doubt is needed for the buffering of the abatis that we talked about if that may have been.
Yeah.
Okay. So, this, around the building, I don't think that that really affects, no.
No.
No, no.
No.
But I think that in this area here is really where...
The original plan.
Right.
There's a plan that was originally approved by the board, correct?
Right. So, the, even though I got a new landscape plan here...
It doesn't...
It's mainly for the building.
It's for the building. The landscape around the original...
Building looks great.
Area there, dumpster area.
Yeah.
Will stay the same.
We call it the southwest corner of this piece right here.
The west southwest corner.
It's in here.
Really not the southwest.
No, that's the, that's the, that's the old one.
Probably not.
Well, I was looking for the drawing. Why don't I open it up to the audience and see if I got any...
Wait, can I just make one comment for us?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, instead of having two landscaping plans, why don't you include what's on that one onto this one? And then we have it all, you know, in one place, it's contiguous, and we have no way to...
Yeah.
Right? I can sort of connect here.
Are you concerned?
I do.
Why don't I open it up while we're looking? Uh, why don't we open up the audience? Do you have anyone wish to speak or have any comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Goldman, one of the abatis. Notwithstanding the fact that the property owner told us he wouldn't put a restaurant, and this board knows he said that. He actually promised us he wouldn't put a restaurant. That's okay. We're adults, we understand that a property owner within the law can do what he wants to do and needs to do to make a living. We have a couple of issues. First, there was a discussion of a, some type of privacy fence, a privacy barrier between the parking lot...
That's right.
In my house, where now that the parking lot's finished and is open, people are walking through the parking lot and staring in my back windows. So, I don't know when that's gonna get done, but I would suggest it should get done soon. The second issue we have is, six or seven months ago, when the trees were taken down between my property and his, my fence was broken. And my fence is still broken, seven months later. So, I'll fix my own fence if he doesn't wanna fix it, but I thought the board should know that. One of the things that was somewhat offensive to my wife, and I had a long talk with Bill Hannigan about this, is the property isn't open yet, and it's not occupied yet, and the property owner has already gone back on things he promised his board and the abatis over a year ago. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
If I could say something about the restaurant? When I said a restaurant, I meant a full-service restaurant, and I also said we won't even have enough parking space for a full-service restaurant. We went from like seventy-five spaces down to, I think, like forty-nine spaces. So, my intent was we could never do a full-service restaurant. When I got the letter from the board approving it, but, you know, there wasn't, there wasn't the approval, so I assumed I could do a takeout restaurant, which is only nineteen seats with no liquor. But I did say not a restaurant, but I, but I meant a full-service restaurant. That's what I, that's what I meant.
We only can go by the minutes and the information we have, okay? If somebody said, if you had said full-service restaurant, we could've taken it then. If you'd said that could maybe have a takeout restaurant, we could take that. But when, when we get just a restaurant, it's such a broad statement that we, we have to be careful. The primary thing is, planning board has, has two things we wanna do, is we wanna protect the residents. So, the planning board's job is to protect and make sure that when something is done, that the immediate residents, when something new comes in, they're taken care of. We also wanna be fair to the developer, 'cause we don't always go one way. As we take and we trade off, we look at both sides, because we, we wanna see development. We wanna see new places. I've looked at your building, your building is a nice-looking building, and I think it's gonna be an asset. We just wanna make it work, okay? Because, and then we look at history, and the history of that site had not been very good over a number of years, a number of issues. So, by you putting another building and having a restaurant, whether it be a takeout restaurant or a full-time restaurant, you start to inherit some of the same issues that come with the property. So, we have to address those, and that's when a number of people came to us and said, hey, Neil, we get an, we see a thing in the paper and it says now there's gonna be a pizza restaurant. And, and I've looked at the, and again to refresh my memory, the videos, and the statement was made quite, quite clearly, no restaurants.
But I did say, but I did say at the same time, Mr. Chairman, that we didn't have enough parking for a restaurant, which assumed it was a larger restaurant.
So, what we took it with that and says, okay, let's get it cleaned up, let's take it, I know we can make it work. We have some issues, let's take care of the issues, and we all move forward. And that's what I'm trying to do here tonight. No, I'm not gonna shut it down, we're not gonna stop it. We just wanna clean it up, make sure everybody knows what's going on, and, and we can get forward. You can get your business open, and that the neighbors also have some, some input to what's going on. So, that they're protected, and that's what I'm trying to do. And that's all, that's all I'm trying to help them out. It was sort of a, this board is sort of a go-between, and just make sure that we keep the neighborhood good. You have a, a good building, a good customer, and by working with neighbors, you have a happier life too. So, that's what I'm trying to accomplish, okay? Counselor?
Yes. I'm the faculty of Seventy Eastern Avenue, and I'm also representing those constituents of my board, Board One. I was at the hearing when the developer indicated that there would be no restaurant, and that was good news, even though I'm a big proponent of economic development, small business, because, you know, living in that neighborhood, I remember how much impact the wedding banquet restaurant had. Walking by, especially the dumpster area with all of the, the trash that would kind of, you know, minnow out onto the sidewalk, and, you know, when it rained, it kind of leaked out onto the sidewalk and the smell, and so on and so forth. And of course, as all of you know, when you have a restaurant, now you have a whole different situation with trash. Trash pickup needs to be picked up more often, and if you did not have a restaurant use in that, in that development. Also, oils, oils will need to be picked up, you know, the fat, it will need to be picked up. So, that's another situation with somebody coming back and forth. And I know that many of the neighbors have indicated, even neighbors further out on Star Street, about the noise of the trash pickup and the times of the trash pickup, you know, being early in the morning, it would wake them up, and so on and so forth. So, as much as I do agree that the building is, it looks very nice, it looks like it's right into that neighborhood, I know that they, I think the developer did a very good job of making sure that it wouldn't be, you know, an eyesore. The lighting is good, everything looks good, except that really changes the complexion of the whole situation. And the fact that we were told that there would not be a restaurant there is very, very concerning. And now going forward, what else are we gonna be told that isn't exactly what comes to be? And I'm also very concerned that the Goldmans have not been addressed as far as the fence. And I've been there, and I know what he means. The fence looks right down into their windows. And the landscaping situation too, I wanna make sure there's a good buffer between their house and the fence. That was another thing that was discussed, that they would work with the Goldmans on what kind of landscaping there was gonna be as well, and who was gonna take care of it. So, all these things are very important. And like I said, the restaurant just changes the whole, you know, the whole complexion of the situation.
Is there a privacy fence on that drawing?
I did have a conversation with Mr. Goldman regarding the fence, and I did follow up with the, the site contractor regarding not only the fence along the back of Mr. Goldman's, but also along the back of the Orlando's. He had indicated to me that they were working on, I think, the Orlando fence at the time. I haven't been able to verify that, but as far as the fence on top of the wall, they were planning on doing it in the spring. But as far as the fence on top of the wall, they were planning on doing it in the spring. I said, "Can you advance that?" And he said it would be two to three weeks. So, I'm hoping that, you know, sometime, hopefully, I can commit to him, because I don't have him here right now. But if we can get that up, hopefully, maybe before Thanksgiving, I think that would go a long way in making things better.
That's part of the problem. You really take your heart, Mr. Chairman, to finish that fence.
Well, I mean, he should, he should be able to put up what people want.
I mean, that should have been the first thing to come up.
Yeah, it's like the Walmart sound barrier to Liberty Colomans.
We'll be holding up, putting up a fence.
Well, he was going to put the fence with all the landscaping, which he wasn't planning on doing all the landscaping until the spring, is what he told me.
But he can still put the fence up without the landscaping.
You know, the fence can go up now, because they're asking for it.
Did we say we needed a fence on that corner piece too, next to the dumpster?
Right here, there's a fence.
No, no, go down there.
Right, but there's a fence right around here as well.
You're going to put a fence around the dumpster, but you're not planning on continuing that fence to that point?
Okay.
That was where all the landscaping agreement was going to be, in that area there.
Okay.
We'll see if we can.
But the fence around the dumpster should have to be called a landscaping.
Can we be certain the fence is up before the week, like in two weeks? Can we be certain?
I can't tell you right now until I talk to them, but I think that.
Well, I'll put it to you this way. If Sorento's, if Sorento's wanted their, their.
Run, run, Carol.
If Sorento's wanted their square footage, wanted their unit done by a certain date, I bet you it would be done. So, the, the Goldmans want their fence up. Yes, tomorrow.
Carol, Carol, Carol.
Well, Carol, I can't, I can't, it's on my fence company. I can't, I can't control it. I can put an order in, I can, you know, give them a deposit. When they do it, they do it. I can't, it's on my fence company. I can't control that. But we make a commitment that the fence will go up.
You weren't before us a year ago. That's all I'm saying. It's been a year.
Well, tell you the truth, I knew it was a big deal until tonight. I would, if this was an issue a year ago, I would have put, I would have put up a year ago. It was never an issue.
I believe it was an issue a year ago.
We said the fence was going up. It wasn't an issue that we had, we have to put up for two weeks.
Because the plan was, it said was on the plan.
Right.
That there was going to be a fence.
Right, and it will be.
The issue has happened because it didn't happen.
But we're not done yet.
Okay. Well, your building, let's put it this way. When Sorento comes in, the fence will be up.
Yeah, oh, of course.
Can I approach you, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
That's the view I'm looking at, okay? We've been looking at that for a year. That's the parking lot you're looking at.
I got it, I got it.
I can tell you where they bought their coffee.
Yeah.
That's how it looked before as well, and I've looked at it, no, no, there was a fence there before.
The Weathervein had a fence.
The Weathervein put a fence up. They were good neighbors, okay?
Okay.
So, your fence is lower than the other one?
Yeah, their property is above mine.
Then they got to fix your fence.
Yep, so they got to fix the fence, and we'll make sure that we get a letter to the building inspector. And that's the only thing that we have, is that the fence is completed before there's any occupancy. Okay? But, or do we want to put a?
I just, you know.
What's the timeframe for Sorento's? Do you have one?
We're looking at, at least two or three months.
So, I mean, it's not going to happen immediately. We shouldn't delay the fence until Sorento's comes in. The fence should be put in immediately, as soon as the contractor is available to do it. And that isn't, you know, in the, during the middle of the winter or in the spring. I mean, we went through the same problem, just, you know, as a point of reference, we had a condo development behind Walmart. And Walmart was trying to push and push, and they were putting soft openings out, and there was no fence. There was no sound barrier. There was nothing. And they came into town, they wanted the soft opening, and we wouldn't let anything open. And within less than a week, they said they couldn't get materials, they couldn't get the contractor on site, less than a week, they had a hundred people there, and the fence was up in two days. And that was the one behind Walmart. So, you know, that's important to the site development. Should have been done first, and it's, it's too bad.
Well, I would, I would actually, I would disagree with doing it first.
It should have been done early on.
He had to build a wall.
I understand. I understand, but it shouldn't have.
It's not atypical for the landscaping to be the last part of the project.
I understand.
And that would have did the contractor, but I think, I spoke to, I spoke to the contractor, no, I spoke to the contractor, and he told me it's going to take two to three weeks to get it up.
Okay.
So, that's, that's where I'm getting the dates.
So, we're looking for that. We'll give you a month. Christmas present. Oh, okay. Okay, sorry, bud.
Boy, you gave him your phone too, huh?
I don't know. Bill is saying two weeks. Let's give him two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks.
Bill's saying two. I can't do it two weeks. I mean, I can't, I don't control the fence company. It's like I don't control anything.
So, why don't we dress this?
Listen, he's doing a nice job. Let's give him a month. Nobody's going to be in there. The building's not even close to being completed.
Right.
Is there any, can we close the hearing?
Yeah.
People done talking?
I'm just, I was going to ask that question.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the trash pickup, the, you know.
Yeah, we're going to have some conditions on that.
Yeah, because.
He has no control over it when they come.
Well.
Yes, he does.
Yeah.
Well, the thing about this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because quite, quite a few of the neighbors, that was a big concern of theirs, the noise, you know, the, the tines that they were going to come in. And now with a restaurant, I mean, you have to understand, it's going to be different than if you just had stores, offices. It's a whole different, it's, you know, it's rubbish now.
I understand that, but again, it's not a full-service restaurant. All the waste is our friends.
Yeah.
It's mostly takeout.
Yes. But I mean, in order to be a good neighbor, you're going to have to make sure that those dumpsters are not being, you know, at the crack of dawn or in the middle of the night, because people will keep on complaining about it.
Yes.
I'm just going to refer to the fence again. I don't know why fences are always such a major issue on every development. But I was the white counselor that Sal's referring to on, on the Walmart. And also, the Lowe's side was even a bigger issue, because there was closer neighbors to that issue. The fence that they finally put up was an incredible fence that, no questions after, was a sound barrier fence. I watched them put it up. It was the inserts. And it, and it, I don't think it was a very expensive, it wasn't anything architecturally designed, but it serves a purpose, and it helped the neighborhood, and it wasn't a big deal. But, you know, and just to the restaurant issue, whether it's big, a full, full-service restaurant would affect the parking. So, when you're, I was here for a couple of the meetings, but when you talk about a restaurant, you're talking about smells. It doesn't matter if it's big or small. Talking about smells, you're talking about trash that has food residue in it, and those are the issues. It doesn't matter if it's a full-service, might matter if it doesn't have fish in the, in the dumpster.
Yeah.
But, you know.
They've been there for forty years.
But, you know, it's, it's, it's a change. It's not with the original.
Yeah, I think I've heard enough.
Do we have to continue it?
Nope, we're going to close the time. Uh, I have a motion to, to close.
Sub moved.
Motion made in second. Any further, any discussion from the board? Colonel, call for the board. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Close. Plant submitted, and Electric Avenue, apple tree.
I know, those would be, you're making, you're making Bill look bad, not that, that he's much effort.
I have the large copies.
So, this property is at the Ludenberg, almost the town line, up near Wayland. On the left as you're heading out there, part of the old Wayland parking lot. Basically, just separating a lot of the three lots. Twenty-one, seven, eighty, middle area. We have over thirty thousand plus on each lot. Eighty-foot frontage, a hundred-foot lot width. We have a hundred-plus of our frontages. Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's confusing, but yeah, it's, it's like left and right. So, there's Emerald Place is to the right. You can see the Idiabutter Emerald Place developing earlier. So, the old Wayland park used to own everything. This one went to one property, and the other one went to another.
So, the lots one, two, and three?
Yeah, three lots.
Twenty-one, you have enough, and then the eighty feet, you have a hundred, and I move to endorse.
Second.
Motion made in second and to endorse. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
Next one you're listening to? So, next Anna, you're listening?
No, that was it for me.
Enter for R and B, Southgate. He had to change it because he had a common problem, common driveway. Okay.
So, we can combine several of the existing research drive lots into several others. There are R and B projects to design on the four A lot. It would be lot six A, five A, and two B one and two B two. That will be reconfigured and gone from there. Brian, the front is along research drive. We have the adequate area. If there's any questions.
And lot seven already exists as it is? Lot seven already exists as it is?
Lot seven's not going to change at all.
Okay. And, okay, you have that little frontage for lot five A. I'm making the assumption.
Now, five A?
Thirty feet, okay.
Okay, you took out that old, that road there, right? And you reconfigured it for five A? Okay.
I, I move to endorse.
That looks a lot better.
Okay.
Yeah, that old road was kind of a tear. I have a motion made in second and to endorse. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Definitive subdivision plan for Brooks Pond.
Well, we have to schedule. Do we want to do it on September, November twenty-first?
We have to advertise it.
We have to advertise it.
First meeting in December.
Summer fifth?
December.
Summer fifth.
Okay.
Motion made in second and for December fifth at six thirty for a subdivision plan for Brooks Pond. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Old Business, continued site plan for Exchange Street.
I got an email from Ted today. I'll start with that. I put it in your supplemental materials that were. Copies of the, this was attached to the email. It's. It is referring to this as an as-built plan.
And they were parked. They had it back. There was a car parked.
Oh, yeah, make the guy at the Exchange Street all the time.
I've been there by now. We're back to where we are, okay? This is not an as-built plan. An as-built plan will have the grates, the drainages, and everything. We still have an issue. Come up with a new plan. You can come up with a circular driveway where you don't back out onto Exchange Street. I have pictures. We've seen it happen. They back out on Exchange Street. So, that front house, an as-built might be one thing. This is, this does not, this is a sketch. This is not an as-built drawing, and I'm not accepting it as an as-built.
And what's the status of this? What are we supposed to do with it under Old Business tonight?
Can I read his email?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Who's the email from?
From Ken Oldfield, the engineer.
Read what he wrote.
Kristen, attached is the as-built plan as we discussed today. This plan will include as the existing conditions plan, will be included as the existing conditions plan on the final revised plan for the new part. As you know, the plan which was submitted to the board has not changed, and all the requested information requested in previous meetings were included on the plan submitted. The only additional information requested was the as-built plan which is attached. This office is working with the DPW to fulfill minor requests. A full updated set of plans will be submitted after appeasing the requirements of the DPW. The above information was supplied to the board, and the as-bill was requested as part of the closing of the meeting. As in other projects, the additional information requested by the DPW is typically set forth as a condition of approval. Since all the additional information was previously supplied to the board, I would suggest the same.
When has this been, when do we have until? December?
December fifteenth. Also, in the meantime, I've spoken with Popeye and Page about how to reopen the open public meeting for this.
Oh, that's right.
This is also included in your packet. I can read this as well if you like. The, the request was from me. We voted to close the open public meeting, which turned out to be an error. We need to reopen the meeting to accept additional information from the developer. How can we reopen that meeting? So, Brian Riley says, "I don't see this as a big problem. I told some others here. The consensus was that if this was a hearing pursuant to general law, chapter forty A, a special permit, the board and applicant would need to basically start from scratch, a new hearing, even as a continuation scheduled, mail notices to Butters and all that. However, site plan approval is not found in chapter forty-eight, and so is not subject to the formalities of a forty-eight hearing process. It would be subject to any hearing process or requirements that are expressly set forth in the zoning ordinance of the city. But I do not find any such requirements. The hearing process for a special permit, for example, must follow the strict notice requirements, or be subject to being found invalid, and the board is not permitted to accept new information after a formal hearing is closed. In this case, in my opinion, the planning board may put the hearing, whether it is considered a new or continued hearing, continued may be less confusing, on its meeting agenda, and then reopen it and accept the developer's additional information. If any in the, one in the audience wishes to be heard, I would recommend they be allowed to speak. That part is not relevant." So, he's saying we can, if we were to schedule it as an additional public hearing, then it gets in the book and on the agenda.
So, why don't we put it on for the fifth? Under, under, you know, with the, under.
Old Business.
The schedule.
Well, no, I think it has to go at the top.
You're right, you're right.
Put it on the fifth, continued public, well, put under pub.
We have to vote for it to be a continued public hearing. Didn't they want it to the fifteenth?
Well, we have until the fifteenth.
We have until it's, they've asked for, asked for an extension through to the fifteenth. We have two meetings before that, the twenty-first and the fifth.
Oh, it's open for the fifth.
Yeah, so why don't we, um. But why don't we vote now to?
To, to.
We can vote now to open up.
To reopen the, to reopen the continued public hearing.
And schedule it to December fifth.
But the schedule open the meeting for the fifth.
For the fifth?
We didn't, we closed.
Yeah, but it's closed, but we can. Yeah, but it's closed, but we continuing it for voting.
Right.
Reopen it as, as a continued public meeting.
You could reopen it on the twenty-first. If you, if it's open on the fifth, that's the last meeting before that extension. I don't know if they'll have his material.
So can't we vote now to put it back on the?
It's on the twenty-first, though.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be advertised.
Well, they have an extension to the fifth.
Oh, the twenty-first.
So we have an additional meeting to address it before.
All right. That's, we have to get point.
It doesn't need to be advertised, so, you know, we don't need that extra.
Okay. So I want to make that.
I make a motion to. To, well, I'm trying to think.
Well.
I guess to, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing for.
Exchange Street.
Just right that we could.
For Exchange Street.
For Exchange Street and place it on the agenda for November twenty-first at.
Six forty?
Six forty-five.
So they'll be sitting around for a while, but that's okay.
No, we have the, we have something.
Oh.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, whatever, six forty-five works. Yes, we notified the butters again.
Oh, we don't.
I thought that's what we did.
No, it's forty B.
All right, what was the time? Six forty-five?
Six forty-five.
Yeah, whatever would be the next time.
So you currently have six thirty, six thirty-one, and six thirty-two for the summer.
Yeah, six forty-five is okay.
Six forty-five.
Okay.
So that is.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Continued site plan modification for twelve ninety Main Street.
This site plan, Sal, don't need, never mind.
You know, I'm just looking at this and he's saying that he would recommend, you know, people be allowed to speak, but he would recommend sending another written notice to the butters for us to handle.
I think he's saying.
Oh, is that what he says?
I didn't read that part, to be fair, because I didn't think it was valid, but I should have read it.
That's okay.
He says, in addition, if you sent written notice of the first hearing to a butters, which we did not.
We didn't.
I would recommend that this be done again.
And it doesn't have to be, and it doesn't have to be.
So those were consistent.
It doesn't have to be published or advertised, so.
No, it doesn't need that, we don't need a butters note.
Okay.
Okay. Twelve ninety Main Street.
Sorry.
Okay. Site plan modification. I think the discussion we've had, that we want to, condition is that we want to see the fence installed within a, within a month.
So.
Mr. Goldman's fence.
In Mr. Goldman's fence, right.
And we want to see the landscape.
That the landscape plan.
To include.
To include the landscaping around the dumpster area.
Yeah.
So that's clear, because we got one now that doesn't show it. And.
And you couldn't find it on the old.
Yeah, and it, and that, and it can be taken, that can be viewed and approved by the, the department.
What, what can be?
The, the landscape plan.
The landscape plan. Okay.
But to include the dumpster piece, Kristen.
Rather than having another hearing.
Well, we can, because we closed.
Can't, well, we closed it.
Apparently we can open whatever we want.
Yeah, we can reopen it. Well, that's all right. And, but, you know, that's all right. And. Seeing as a restaurant, I didn't know if we wanted to put any kind of hours of operation restriction on it. And I was thinking ten o'clock.
I think they close at eight. The ones that exist, I think, close at eight.
I think they do too, but.
I don't know, I ordered a pizza before eight o'clock.
Me neither, so.
You know?
Me neither.
Yeah, exactly.
I couldn't, you know, that's. I mean, eleven o'clock seems like a more reasonable closing time for our piece, please.
Saying eleven, I was thinking ten.
So it's at twenty-four, I said.
I don't know, I mean, can we do, can we do that?
Yes, we can.
I don't know. I mean, I, I, I mean, we, we beat him up a little bit, but for the past a hundred years, there's been a restaurant there.
And.
That sold, that was a full ser, that was two full-service restaurants.
And a bar.
And a function hall.
And a big bar, and a function hall.
That was open for lunch and dinner. So, and now, now it's going to be an eighteen person mostly takeout place. The problem is, he said it. He shouldn't have said it. That's the problem.
Uh huh.
Just say, I don't, I can't tell you.
Okay, so we'll just stick with the landscaping and the fencing and leave it at that. I get that, just.
And the, you know, should we address the hours of dumpster?
Yeah.
That one.
Oh, yeah, dumpster.
You know, that should be implied, too.
Because they, I'm thinking he can regulate that.
I'd say, yeah, he can. Not before seven o'clock in the morning.
And not after, seven o'clock at night.
Okay.
And not after what?
More restrictive than that.
He said a lot.
Eleven at night?
Eight.
Yes, eight, seven o'clock at night, six o'clock.
Mike's getting heated a lot.
You know, I know they don't come out either.
I pull a dumpster.
And how about, how about, you know, now that this use has changed, the frequency of that should change too, the pickup.
Well, that, that's what they, all depends how much the volume. The volume will, they got that. We don't know, I can't put a volume on that.
No, no, I'm just saying.
It all depends on the size of the dumpster they have.
Yeah.
Eight to seven.
Okay.
Yeah, for a month and stink.
The twenty footer or forty footer, you know? So why don't we put seven, seven to seven?
Seven's kind of early, isn't it?
I think eight.
Yeah, I think eight to six.
I think seven's fine, it's because, because six, the parking lot's full.
Yeah.
Yeah, seven.
I ask a question, though. Is that dumpster pad big enough for two? Like, will they need a concrete?
How big a dumpster?
They haven't planned it from, I know, I know that there's enough room there to put a conventional dumpster and one of the grease units.
So the grease unit with all the renderings, right? That thing's going to stink to high heaven.
They emptied that periodically.
How, what's periodically? Every six months or when it stinks bad? There's one outside in back of Five Donalds that I walk by a lot, that doesn't lose.
Yeah, the new ones aren't bad.
Yeah, but yeah, no, it's been dead for twenty years.
Sometimes, sometimes, Tom's like. He's wrestling on Almond Hill, looking for sprouts.
She's looking for a sandwich.
Oh, you guys are getting bad. Let's move on.
No, he's.
All right, get one, let's get one.
Too early.
Come on. Okay, we got one condition, it's fun.
Well, that's actually a really good comparison, if you think about it. Paesano's Pizza is probably about as, as close to a comparison of what he's putting in.
Right, and it's a full-service bar, well, if you.
Well, they have a bar by it, too.
Chase and Bar next to it.
Yeah.
That's probably, outside, probably doesn't have more than five or six people.
Sure.
So the hours, eight to seven, is that what the?
Let's try eight to seven.
Wait, for the garbage. Dumpster pickup.
I'm sorry, yeah.
We can't do anything for the time of the.
No, 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 I incorporate anything.
I mean, that's imposing upon the business, not the developer.
That's true.
Okay, and the fence.
So those are, we have three conditions?
Maybe if you put Febreeze sheets along the abreviated line of dumpster, and you get a prevailing one from the north, it would be good.
Let me go back to Florida. Eight to seven on trash on the fence within the month.
Yeah.
Did I, what did I miss?
Every.
Updating the.
Oh, the update landscape plan.
And that's all right.
Okay.
I, with those conditions, I approve the modification to the site plan.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Old Business, site plan for forty-five, Summer Street, been continued. Special permit for residential apartments for forty-five. Summer Street, continued. Special permit for parking for Summer Street, been continued. Site plan for six, seven, zero, Mechanic Street, Office Building.
I made a motion to approve the site plan with any, that are, that are applicable, that are applicable. I think it was two thirty-six Lancaster Street that some of them don't apply. But so, anyway, that's it.
Yep.
Okay. Motion made and seconded on six, seven, zero Mechanic Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Site plan for two, three, six Lancaster Street.
I make a motion to approve with any conditions from the original approval before the config, reconfiguration of the plan. Can I do that?
Yeah.
Well, just the conditions that are already in place.
Oh, they, yeah, it's a better word, yeah.
With the existing conditions.
Yeah.
I like the new plan.
That is cool.
Okay. Any other, anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Conditions. City Council request.
Looks great, looks great. As long as you get it done.
Yeah, good luck. City Council request, pump station and road acceptance at Castle Land, a letter. I've got to see a plan for this, because I took a ride around there. Most of the roads are done, but there's a whole section, the road is not done. And the last group, the last area. Now, so we'll have to have a see a plan and see if it's being segmented or what, but there's, there's a lot, there's still houses being built. And so, until I get something for the D P W, I'm not sure. I think we're quite away. Do you represent them?
Yes, I, good evening, I'm Michael Obzol from Bioletter Companies.
Yeah.
We're not asking for acceptance of the entire development. We're asking for the, the, the roads that were submitted last year and voted by the, by the city council.
My bad, I almost put the wrong thing on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Yes, so those specific roads, the ones where the houses are finished and the, and the roads are complete, those are the ones that.
Okay, when I got in front of me was, was all of it, not any.
I can understand that.
I think what we do is better refer this to a site walk with the D P W. Okay? And then we'll, we'll have the actual plans. And then that's fine.
And then we can reference the correct.
We did, we did have the, a year ago, we, we submitted the plans to D P W and recently had them do another follow-up site walk last week.
Right. Hey, most of it looks real good, but then I could see that last segment, and I didn't have a differentiation on it.
So instead of a site walk with the D P W, why don't you just have a letter from the D P W saying which streets are acceptable to submit?
We actually, I did communicate with the D P W. So there's the pump station, and then there's the street. And the D P W did sign off on, there was a, a list of issues with the pump station from several months ago. Those have all been addressed and has been signed off by the D P W.
I mean, on the other, I'm saying, we've had other roads. We've had sidewalks on the roads. Okay, I'm just, that's why I'm saying we've done that in the past. No, we don't, well, it was good having a rep from the D P W there, because then they explained things so as we went around that we saw. So somebody, you know, and one of their engineers, so, so that, that if there's some, there was an issue. That's all, they won't get down to the road except in sets. Yeah. So, you know, it's a, it's a morning, or whatever. As long as you get it done before the snow flies.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to schedule that?
Yeah. We get any dates that anybody? Do it before the next meeting sometime, if you can.
Pick a date. Well, you're next week and Thanksgiving week.
Yeah, it'll have to be next week.
So the next, yeah, the next meeting is the twenty-first, so next week is, who is it, fourteen? I'm available Wednesday through Friday, but I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
No, I might be on this.
You have vacation?
So Tuesday.
Oh, I wish I had.
No, I have a seminar.
Good.
Okay. Wednesday, Tuesday?
I'm not available that week at all. I'm traveling.
Anybody available?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Next week.
Well, we'll have to bring a wheelchair, yeah.
I have to make it, bring an oxygen truck.
Is it Tuesday? When we shoot for Tuesday morning?
Tuesday the fifteenth?
Well, they'll take care of it.
Okay, what time?
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
Can't make it eight thirty.
It's too late.
Can you do it before eight thirty? I mean, I'm talking seven.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously. There's nothing I can do. I know, that's what I'm saying, I mean, seriously. I can't do anything after that, I can't.
Nope.
At night, it's dark.
I know.
So we're going to do it, we're going to do it.
I'll go by.
Eight o'clock? I mean, you're.
I'll go by.
Eight o'clock.
I'll go by two p.m.
Eight o'clock. We'll make a three.
I'll confirm that with the D P W.
Okay. Okay. Marcelo Avenue subdivision endorsement.
Um.
Yeah.
So Marcelo Ave subdivision was approved.
Long time.
A long time ago. But it was never endorsed, the, my law was never endorsed. So it was approved, I want to say, to April twenty-twelve. So it's been four and a half years.
It's not bad.
So. Um, so therefore hasn't been recorded either.
And, and the question is, is we have, they're supposed to be endorsed when a certain length of time. Okay? We've got drawing, you know. What's, what's the requirement?
It's a, the way it's worded, it says, once it's been endorsed, it has to be recorded within six months, but it hasn't been endorsed yet. So there's a little ambiguity there. So if, what I did is just to see if, let's say it had been endorsed and recorded, would it still be a live plan? So if, if you give it two years for a regular plan before it expires, it did fall into the timeframe where the, with the Carrot Extension Act. So it got another four years ahead. So it would still be a valid plan if it had been signed and recorded. And I don't see anything that prevents you from signing it.
But isn't that up to the registered deeds anyway? At some point? We're going to, we can sign it, I mean, you have to record it, then that's for them to determine, so.
If I may, through the chair, the, the requirement for the subdivision is, is as Kristen said, you know, that once it's endorsed, you record it within six months. And then there's actually a, a seven or eight-year timeframe on it, plus the four-year extension. So there's actually twelve years available for the plan to be.
The seven or eight-year timeframe is for the zoning.
From, no, that's from the date of endorsement.
Right, but it's, it's on, it's on the zoning, preserving the zoning, not the, not necessarily the validity of the plan itself. But I, I think you're still within that timeframe.
That's fine. Whereas, whereas we need Sharpies, we only sign with Sharpies.
Yeah, where's the pen?
Hey, we're two years early here.
I'm not signing if I don't get a Sharpie.
We're two years early here.
On my own.
Want to go back to you.
May have.
Sharpie.
Well, I think, you know.
And it's got to be.
Took the mouse out of the box.
We can sign it, but I don't like the, the delay in getting an endorsement.
Yeah, but what, why does that bother you? That's the problem.
Well, no, it extends, it extends the whole time. We have, we have.
No, 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 not really, because like Kristen said, that was for the zoning. They still get their two years, and then they get the four-year extension, right?
But they've already got the four years.
So it's six years, well, they've gotten four years, now they only have two years left. Or will they sign the clause?
I think it's from when it was approved, but it's a, it's a little, the way that the, that the ordinance reads.
Silence, I'm talking.
You both sign it. You know what?
We can.
You get the pen, do this?
We can, we can.[1734.44]